Welcome to the Tuesday, June 7th, 2016 study session. Mrs. Luton, as I call the meeting to order, I would like to recognize that all board members are in attendance this evening. Moving on to our pledge of allegiance, please join the board in pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic before which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to our meeting opening, 1.03, approval of agenda. We, at this time, do have a motion to approve the Tuesday, June 7th, 2016 Board of Education Study Session Agenda. I do need a motion. Thank you, Charles Taylor, motion, I need a second.
Second.
Jerry Lee, and at this time, we do need to vote. We will move forward to public comments to address agenda items. This is part of our meeting where the Board of Education welcomes comments from the audience about issues being discussed. Do you have comments this evening? No, we do not, thank you. We'll move on to information reports. At this time, we have an OTC partnership update, and Julie Steiger's going to facilitate that discussion.
Thank you. A little history, 26 years ago, voters in southwest Missouri overwhelmingly approved the establishment of our first junior college in this area, and it was referred to as the heart of the Ozarks Technical Community College, I believe, now known as OTC. Their first semester, they housed 1,200 students in graphic vocational technical center. My guess is that Bruce and Denise will remember what that building is. It's now Lincoln Hall on the west end of the campus. Since that time, OTC has hosted more than 200,000 students, taking advantage of their programs, not just here in Springfield, but also in Branson, Hollister, Lebanon, Waynesville, and then between Ozark and Nixa somewhere, where that campus is. About a year ago, the leaders at OTC made a very wise move and hired one of the most, I would say, innovative and intuitive educators with whom I've ever worked, and that would be Dr. Matt Hudson. A loss for us, but a great gain for OTC, and then he had the wisdom to hire Tiffany Bruner, and I'm happy to report, these are both SPS products, and they are here tonight to share with you what OTC has to offer our students.
Wow. Thank you. It's good to see you all again. My name is Matt Hudson, this is Tiffany Bruner. We're going to give you a quick update about our partnerships between OTC and SPS, and just kind of want to give you a little bit of a where we are, where we're headed, sort of thing, and go from there, so. First off, I am the dean of technical education, and for those of you that don't know specifically how OTC is structured, we have Allied Health Division, we have technical education and general education, so I have one of the three divisions. Tiffany's in charge of our middle college program, which is some of the secondary programs that we host on our side at OTC.
Thank you so much for having us. We basically have three goals at middle college. One, we want students to graduate from high school. Secondly, we want them to find success in college courses. And thirdly, we want them to participate in an internship in business and industry.
That's yours?
Come on, Viana.
Okay, I'm just gonna push the button for you.
These are some of the career and technical education pathways that our middle college students can participate in. We have just a really wonderful variety, and our students get to experience a lot of different offerings, along with the greatest technological advances that a community college can provide.
On the other side of the house, we have our Career Center, which is probably more what you're familiar with if you've been around education in the last 50 years, is where you have the morning and the afternoon structure of students coming over for part of their high school day, specifically to our area juniors and seniors that receive career and technical education, and then come back to their home school, and they receive the remainder of their core credits. Springfield Public Schools, at the time, that joined when the junior college district was formed, a consortium of school districts in southwest Missouri, which is 17 school districts, including Springfield, and we provide career and technical education for those students. When they leave the Career Center, most of our students have at least a certificate, which is around 32 hours of credit. They also receive high school credit at the same time. They use equipment on our campus that's allowed for us to be purchased that's state-of-the-art, that's really almost in no other place. When they go to industry, we're usually a step ahead of them, and they're able to use, post-secondary-wise, their A-plus scholarship funds. So they go to school for free. Oftentimes, they come back and they leave with zero debt, which is really one of the biggest goals we have in that program. It's a more expansive list of offerings. It actually includes all of our post-secondary programs, with the exception of one, and that's industrial maintenance, and it's listed on there, but I wanted to put that on there because that is one we're looking towards doing up. So we have about 20 programs that Career Center students from Springfield have access to, in addition to those in the consortium.
They asked us to put a celebration in here. I would like to report, we graduated 100 percent of our seniors this year. We are very, very proud of that. I will tell you, we came up with some fairly unorthodox ways to make that happen, but we did make it happen, so we're very proud of that. Also, we don't have any sports teams at OTC, but we do have Skills USA, which students participate in, and so Springfield will be represented by national qualifiers in career and technical education areas.
Some other celebrations that we're excited to talk about, specifically for high school, next year, we will have the first junior fire science program in the area. Actually, it's one of the few in the state. You're familiar probably with the police academies' model of the police academy growing their own. The fire departments among the area really have struggled to grow talent, because it's
have teachers that are really working to contemporize their lesson design, and trying to look at
not really a joint effort, and so that advisory committee, which our former fire chief of
the student's strength and match their strength with their learning style, and how best they're
Springfield, Dan Whistler, had a lot to do with strong-arming some people into doing
going to prosper in the classroom, so we're really anxious to see how that's going to
this, helped to form a junior fire science program for next year, which will allow students
work out, and we're very proud of that. Also, a tech math class, I was one of those students, that math was not my subject, but
to walk away completely career-ready, which is really something that's very innovative. In addition to that, we also signed an articulation and partnership agreement with jury university.
we're actually utilizing a class and having students relay the details of how you can
Students that choose to go on the professional side can leave and go on to get an emergency
use this in your work environment, and making it much more relevant and interesting to
management degree in the evening college at a much reduced rate, and still be able
the students in a hands-on way.
Some of the other things we're going to do as far as future partnerships go, next to have that firefighter firsthand knowledge, but also be in that professional designation as well, and that begins next year for the first time. year, we attempted this this year on a very limited basis, but next year, we're actually The other thing that we really have responded to and we're working toward is, you've heard going to be a part of the planning committee for Explore, to really respond to what the of STEM education, STEAM is a variation of that, it includes art, but it's taking all district needs. So if, at the committee, the decision is made that these are the gaps that we have, of those fields and putting them together, and we have some, I'm sorry that thing is what can OTC do to provide those gaps? blocking the bottom, but we have some opportunities for students in the area districts to engage We're looking at career exploration opportunities, really reaching down into the elementary grades as possibilities, because we've realized that having students come over as sophomores, in STEAM days. One is this Friday at Richwood Valley's campus in Ozark, well, between Ozark and Nixa. although as effective, could be more effective if we did it at a much earlier age, and really I don't really know where it's located either, I just know how to get there. And then we have one on the 24th of June at the same location, and we've extended that try to engage especially those STEM types of career pathways to students when they're invitation and have SPS participants. much younger. So we're excited to be on Dana's group that's leading that next year, when this year's
Here's a snapshot of our current enrollment for the Career Center and for middle college
summer school gets over. We thought we'd wait until she got wrapped up with that. We are also partnering with the SPS and the 3M Foundation, we have a 3M plant here, a
as well. Springfield Public Schools juniors and seniors participating in our programs.
pretty small one, allowing us to deliver education in what's called mechatronics, in advanced manufacturing. If you've been in, seen pictures of manufacturing, it's really not like what the pictures are. Most of what runs at 3M and other places around in manufacturing are lean, meaning that they have very efficient processes, and they also have very few people doing it, but the people that are doing it are running multiple machines that are hundreds of thousands of dollars and require great technical skill, and really problem-solving, and so mechatronics allows for that. And then the final thing is, we hosted several times throughout the year, different kind of listening groups and things to do as far as how we can engage superintendents, counselors, and teachers from the districts that feed to the consortium, and OTC is proud to be able to work and serve that work group by having those people as an advising team that would be allow program content for us to be delivered back to you as a customer of us. So that will be something that we will be working on in the future. With that, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer, but we hope we provided you a good little snapshot of what we've done to partner with OTC and Springfield Public Schools.
We had several celebrations in there.
Yeah, we tried to keep it short, because we were gonna do a two-hour presentation, but we cut it down.
Thank you.
No, I'm just teasing. So anyway, thank you very much, we'd be happy to come back anytime you need us for a future update.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to 4.01, contracts, agreements, bids, and change orders, something that I might remind the board, I think you're well aware, and others, that this is our first read for consent agenda items, so if there, if you have questions or comments that you want to make at this time regarding these items, that's fine, we'll open the floor for that in a few minutes, but also keep in mind that we do have three weeks this time, from our study session to our regular session, for time for reflection and thinking and collecting additional data as you need from administration. So that's kind of a nice thing, because it is a very lengthy list of items, but that's necessary this time of the year, as we're working to get things ready to go for new school, new school year. But at this time, Ms. Embry is at the podium to answer any questions or comments that anyone may have at this time about our contracts, agreements, bids, and change orders. So, floor is open.
Thank you. I would just add, I believe that there are 37, if I counted them properly, and the 37th one being, I do need to highlight for you, just within the past hour, I added one to the list, and that's a 90-day extension of the existing agreement for beverage vending with Ozarks Coca-Cola Dr. Pepper Bottling Company. The contract actually expires at the end of June, and we need additional time to conduct an appropriate RFP process, request for proposal, so that work will take place in the next several weeks, and we'll be bringing back a recommendation to you for first read and second read at that time.
Now, will the first read have regular sessions?
It would, no. Whatever the next first-read board meeting, we would hope that we could have it available for, let's say it's the August meeting. I'm not certain how long it will take, but we will provide that to you, and only ask that you vote on it quickly if we are running out of time with regard to the extension date.
Okay, anyone at this time have an initial question or comment? You provide, most of our items are pretty easy to understand, what we have before, but if something comes up, next.
And you'll notice, as you continue to look at many of these, we are working toward getting our agreements on a July 1 through June 30 cycle, and so that is what causes a number of these to come forward at this time of year as well, so this will be our standard operating procedure. Okay, thank you.
Very nice, we'll move on. Board policy, adoptions, revisions. This evening, we have several policy revisions are brought forward for first read again, and this is part of MSBA Association's policy updates, so these are things that they're providing to us or for us as updates necessary by any changes legislatively or policy changes for us to look at. Now, again, we have the option of, we review these, if we have questions, we have time to bring those questions forward to the administration, but at this time, if anyone has a question or a comment about any of the policies that are before us this evening, the floor is open, please feel free to comment.
We'll have another small set, I think they sent us about a dozen, about a dozen last month, so admin has reviewed six of them and prepared any changes that we thought were as appropriate before putting them in front of you, and then we'll have six more, hopefully, next month, ready for you to review. Again, all of these are pushed to us from MSBA, based on their recommendations, and then we adjust to align with our beliefs and thoughts on if it's anything that's outside the norm, so.
Okay, Jerry?
I have one question on the, and I don't know who it goes to, on the background checks, which are great. My question dealt with, who determines who needs a background check? As a volunteer, who makes that decision that Jill needs one, but Denise doesn't? Because, as volunteers, yeah, well, that's volunteer, too.
I can pass.
Prior.
I'm just telling y'all.
Can't get through the fingerprint? But I was just curious who determines that, because I know we have hundreds of volunteers, and I know they're not all doing background checks, because not everybody works with kids on an individual basis, but I'm just curious as to, is that the superintendent, that's the principal? Somebody up here, I was just curious who that was.
We'll get you an answer, I'm not positive off the top of my head. Ann White runs all of our volunteer, we've put that into her area now, and she's kind of taken over supervision of all that space, so we'll get you some feedback.
Because it ought not to be subjective. It ought to be a subjective standard. That's a great question. And so, that's a good point.
Anything, any other policy questions at this time? Okay, moving on, 6.01, new business, Missouri Securities Investment Program. This is districts participating, the Missouri Securities Investment Program are eligible to participate in the election of directors and other businesses at the annual meeting of participants. So we have had a, one of our board members that has served on this committee or this board for a number of years, and so what we need to do this evening is to officially appoint, or vote, or approve Mr. Jerry Lee for position on the Board of Directors, and then in addition, we will also be voting for Mr. Charles Triplet, and I'm gonna let Jerry speak to this for us, since he's been doing this for quite some time, and you can speak for Mr. Triplet, since we don't know him.
The MOSIP, as the typical term is, is, it's an investment pool for school districts, for a place to put their money, to invest their money. I don't know, it's 20-some years old, several years that's been put in place, and Missouri School Board Association created it several years ago, for districts to have a place to invest their money that gets a good rate of return and is in a safe investment portfolio. Since that time, it's been expanded to include counties and cities, any public entities can now join and invest their money. It's about a, almost a billion-dollar investment pool that's managed by PFM out of Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, and so, and they do a great job, you know, right now, you don't make any money on anything, anywhere, but it's still a good, safe tool for us to use, and we've been a member for many, many years, as far as having money invested in the program. The Board of Directors is made up of representatives from MSBA, the county, cities, superintendents, and MOASBO, which is the financial, the administrative arm, financial managers, the Carol Embries of the districts, and that's Chuck Triplet is the chief financial officer at Lindbergh High School in St. Louis, and he's been on for, I guess this will be his second term. And so, this will be my third term, representing MSBA on MOSIP, and it's a great, great tool, and they do a lot of good work financially for districts to invest their money.
So you are representative to vote as on the Board of Directors? Okay, good.
Yeah, I represent MSBA, not Springfield.
Okay, of MSBA, okay.
As a member district, we get a vote on the candidates, it just happens to be one of the candidates is one of our members, so.
I think I can support you.
I appreciate that.
Okay.
Well, that's, we're working on that, so.
This is something that we do need to take action on this evening, we try not to take action at study sessions, but occasionally, due to the calendar, we, and we do have a few of those this evening, so, because we'll start out with this one. So at this time, I need a recommended action that the Board of Education casts its vote in support of Mr. Jerry Lee and Mr. Charles Triplet to serve on the Missouri Securities Investment Program Board of Directors for a three-year term. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Jill Patterson, do I have a second?
Second.
By Alina Leonard, and so we'll need to vote. Very good, thank you. Motion carries, we'll move forward. Jerry, thank you for serving on that committee and representing us as you do on so many state committees, we appreciate that. Moving on to 6.02, Explore personnel elections. Thank you.
Is this Lisa's first presentation?
Lisa, is this your first time?
Good evening, great to be here. We are presenting to you the personnel that we are hiring for Explore, so we will need your vote to move forward with approving this list, so we can move forward with our Explore hiring. These are our new hires.
So, any questions or comments?
We should do that. The children are coming.
We have just a few more.
Yes. It's a team effort, been a team effort.
Let me ask, I think I know how people within the district could apply to work in some of these.
Correct.
We also fill some positions, because when I went around the schools, some of them had a tag on that said substitute, but they were working full-time. So who are those?
Well, we have, we actually have people that we've hired outside the district, and we've, and anyone that missed the cutoff, we actually hire those through Kelly Services.
Kind of have a cut date for processing background checks and all of those things.
Clearances.
Clearances, for those that would be either new teachers or outside of the district to process, so we have a date that we stop, and then we go to Kelly, because they already have all the background checks. It's a real small population, I think we're down to 20 or 25 of the teachers that we have that we hired in that process, but we do have a cut date that we have to go.
Right, absolutely.
20, 25 that are outside the district?
No, the outside of the district.
I got asked that this weekend, how many teachers do I get outside the district?
I think, well, and again, we've also been flipping some of those, Shane, any ideas on those, or Ben, you're in here, too, the folks that we've actually hired outside of the district, the number of teachers that we've hired to work summer at Explore?
Total, what do you have?
Okay, yeah, we can get that number for you.
Thinking in the 40 range, off the top, a little higher than that, a little top.
Yeah, I was gonna say 100.
Total staff that Lisa said that we staffed up completely was 700 by the time you do teachers, teachers in pairs, and the full team.
That's a lot.
It takes a big team to do.
It does.
Any other questions?
On the administrators? Elections, summer's with teachers, elections, with principals, who did that?
Fires them?
Yes, I mean, was it HR and Explorer?
Starts, Ben, do you want to speak to that? You can probably as effectively as anybody say.
Who does that? Who does that?
Who really hired the administrator? I mean, who really decided, we want these administrators and these teachers and...
The building level folks?
Yeah.
So we have, we hired two coordinators early in the year, so Chris Parker and Billy Gosnell are both coordinators. They really facilitate the hiring of all the building-level administrators. Is that the question?
Well, when I went around the buildings, I ran off these four different ways that they were, this was either a principal at the building, but they were only going to be there for sessions.
Correct.
They couldn't be there second.
Yep.
It was a person for four weeks who was at another building, who came to that because they didn't have it at their building. A teacher who was in that, who normally was a teacher in that building, she was going to do it for four weeks and not connect for four weeks. And then somebody that was an administrator for two weeks, and was not at that building or any other building. So, my question is, is there a different philosophy, I mean, I understand why they can't do two times, I understand that, but is there a different philosophy on leadership in the summertime, and what we expect, because I can't, I just didn't get how you could be there, you've got kids there, you've got teachers there, some are there both sessions, some are there one, are they doing different things than we would expect, that Jay would expect during the year from the administrators in a building full-time, or what are the expectations for those people?
Really, yeah, the expectations are really the same that we would have during the regular school year. The difference, several differences, obviously, but we don't have all the same support structures during the summer that we might have, or that we might have during the regular school year, so that'll cause some variation in the work that the administrator does, but, you know, the hope is that some of these folks who maybe not, who are not principals during the regular school year, are really getting a taste of what administration is, what the work is about, so we want to make it as similar to the regular school year as we can, given some of the limitations we have around support structures, that sort of thing. I think anytime that you're going into a building and leading it for just two weeks or four weeks, obviously, the nature of the leadership's going to be a little bit different, but we've done a lot of training on the front end to try to prepare them, the same, same way that we would onboard a new principal during the regular school year in a very compact amount of time, but we want them to have an experience, again, that's as similar as possible.
I have been to middle school or high school, so those people, they can't be people that are, are in all of our administrators' state that level, full year.
Right, so at middle school, high school, you're likely going to have an assistant principal who's sharing that position with another assistant principal, something like that, it wouldn't be the principal during the regular school year, because of the contracts. That's correct.
And that's kind of a factor for elementary and more. They're going to be 12 months.
They did 12 months, but it's not the same number of days as the high school and elementary, so they do, or that's the high school and middle, so they can give up, sacrifice some of their vacation and still work a piece of the summer, they can't work both months, but they can work a piece of the summer, because we do like the consistency, and we know that having the head principals as part of this actually helps students want to show up and be a part of the program, so we kind of look for this balance of some that want to keep working in the summer for a little bit, and then some of those that are up-and-comers to give them some experiences, so it's kind of the best of both worlds, we think, so. We have a variety of different leadership structures that fill those roles exactly.
I think you described them exactly, the four that you've laid out.
Four ways you could get into it, yeah.
I have a couple of questions. First, and this is really worth talking about, but do you know what percentage of teachers, focusing on teachers here rather than the administrators, are teaching both sessions, as opposed to just either the first or just the second?
I don't have that data right offhand.
We can get it.
The second question is a demographic one, I'd be curious to know if there are mostly new teachers teaching summer school, which I can imagine why that would be the case, they're young, just right out of school for the most part, or are they more senior teachers? I can also imagine those nearing retirement, why they might in fact want to do that, so I'd just be curious demographically. So we wanna make it as similar to the regular school year as we can, given some of the limit, limitations we have on, around support structures, that sort of thing. I think anytime that you're going into a building and leading it for just two weeks or four weeks, obviously the nature of, of the leadership's gonna be a little bit different, but we've done a lot of training on the front end to try to prepare them the same, same way that we would onboard a new principal during the regular school year in a very compact, uh, amount of time. But we want them to have an experience again that's as similar as possible.
I have been to middle school or high school, so those people, they can't be people that are, are in all of our administrative state that level, full year.
Right, so at, at middle school, high school, you're likely going to have an assistant principal who's, who's sharing that position with another assistant principal, something like that. It wouldn't be the, the principal during the regular school year because of the contracts. That's correct.
They did twelve month, but it's not the same number of days as the high school and elementary. So they do, or that's the high school and middle. So they can give up, uh, sacrifice some of their vacation and still work a, a piece of the summer. They can't work both months.
Yeah.
But they can work a piece of the summer because we do like the consistency and we know that having the head principals as part of this actually helps students wanna show up and be a part of the program. So we kinda look for this balance of some that wanna keep working in the summer for a little bit and then some of those that are up and comers, uh, to give them some experiences, uh, so it's kind of the best of both worlds, we think. But we have a variety of different leadership structures that fill those roles exactly.
I think you described them exactly, the four that you've laid out.
Four ways you could get into it, yeah.
I have a couple of questions. First, and this is really worth talking about, but do you know what percentage of teachers, uh, focusing te, on teachers here rather than the administrators, are teaching both sessions, um, as opposed to just either the first or just the second?
I, I don't have that data right offhand.
We can get it.
The second question is a demographic one. I'd be curious to know if, if there are mostly new teachers teaching summer school, which I can imagine why that would be the case. They're young, just right out of school for the most part. Or are they more senior teachers? I can also imagine those nearing retirement, why they might in fact want to do that. So I'd just be curious demographically about the years of experience.
No, I'll just finish up with, I think one thing, as we, um, looking at Explore and looking at all the great aspects of the numbers of children that are students that are involved and the benefits to the students. I think one thing we maybe overlooked a little bit, that's the benefits to teachers. And those that I have talked to, I know there are some new teachers that are actually getting to teach summer school in their building, or they will start in the fall, and they already feel, they feel very much a part of that building and already getting to work in their rooms and, and, and that's, I think, a real plus. Um, also, I've talked to a number of teachers that the additional dollars, and it is a very nice increase in summer school salary for teachers this year, that they feel like they can start their advanced degrees a little sooner than they had planned. Because this is a nice little extra bit of money for them. And then some veteran teachers I've talked to that just the additional dollars that they're gonna use to travel and to expand their learning. So it's, I think, been a, a plus for our teachers because it's, they chose where they wanna teach in summer school or not and they have two sessions to choose from. So I, I'm just hearing a lot of pluses from teachers in terms of having this opportunity.
To Denise and Charles' point, if you, if you just taught one of the two months as a starting teacher even, you'd be over forty thousand as a starting salary, which is a, a good, a good place. It's not where we love it to be, we'd love it to be higher, but it's moving in the right direction for sure. And then, uh, as you can thought about those teachers nearing retirement, this multiplies, right? This has an effect on those, uh, years as they wrap up their dis, as they wrap up their careers. So, uh, some great impacts that are outside of the great impacts for kids, so.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, we'll move on to six point oh three, summer school transportation.
We gotta vote on that one.
Thank you.
Yeah, we gotta pay them.
And I have in my notes, huge vote, so. I'm got so excited about talking about benefits for teachers that I.
No problem.
I buy that one. So at this time, uh, do I have a motion that the board approves of personnel elections as presented? Thank you, Tim Rosenberry, a second? Charles Taylor? And now we'll vote. Thanks, Madam VP for keeping me on track. Okay, very good. We'll move forward. Now we'll go to six point oh three, summer school transportation, routes for students with disabilities.
Hello again. So, this is a simple item, but it is required so that we will receive reimbursement from the state of Missouri. And it is simply that you approve the transportation routes presented for summer school transportation for students with disabilities. And, uh, the listing indicated, uh, three hundred and fifty routes, of which one hundred and seventeen are identified as special education and twenty-seven are identified as early childhood special education routes.
Do we not approve the regular routes too?
We do, but we do that, we do that at, at a separate vote in the fall.
No, I mean, summer school.
Oh, no.
Okay, so we don't have to do it for summer school, just for the regular?
Just, just for disability.
Okay, okay.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, this time, I do have a motion that the board approves of transportation routes as presented. Thank you, Jill Patterson, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you very much. The vote is complete. Moving on to six point oh four, consideration of responses to the request for proposal for school day pictures.
So, uh, this is, well, what I would like to say about this, to summarize, is that, uh, we conduct a lot of transactions in this school district and we go through a lot of bid process, a lot of RFP process, and, um, we usually do a very good job. But this can be summarized by saying we had some communication improvement opportunities. The unfortunate thing is that we had the wonderful committee meet to, uh, vet the proposals. They invested their time and energy and for that we apologize, but we basically need to start this one anew. And we will, uh, recommend doing that, but the first step would be to reject these bids. So, that would summarize it. I'd be happy to go into any detail that you would like to hear, but that's the, the crux of the matter.
Any questions or comments? So at this time, we do need, um, I need a motion that the board rejects all bids responded to the request for proposal for school day pictures, RFP one-six-B dash zero-zero-five-three. Do I have a motion? Thank you, Alina Leonard, and do I have a second? Charles Taylor? And so at this time, we'll vote. Thank you, vote is complete.
That would be good for what?
Now we'll move to six point oh five, um, six-twelve social studies and the K-five science major instructional goals, better known as MIGs, but these are major instructional goals, so, some more.
Just a minute. It's my pleasure to be back again with you this evening and update you with where we are with our curriculum journey. And so on behalf of Dr. Mike Dawson, the Chief Learning Officer, and Allison Pilly, our Director of Curriculum and, Director of Learning Support, um, I'm here to, uh, introduce you to the team that leads the work in this area. Hope Gallimore, first of all, will be our Coordinator of Secondary Literacy. And that title doesn't give the full realm of her work, because while she manages the English Language Arts component for six-twelve, because of the way we're integrating the work, she also manages six-twelve social studies. And then, Anne Wallenmeyer, who is titled as our Coordinator of Assessment Intervention, also shepherds the K-twelve science curriculum. So these are some pretty big jobs to do. They work with teachers across the system and they're gonna talk you through the two adoptions that are before you tonight. So, ladies, I'll invite you up here.
Thank you. Uh, in preparation for our K-five science and six-twelve social studies adoption cycle that will start this fall, uh, we had a team of teachers and administrators come in to review and revise the current major instructional goals that we have. Um, this team of, of teachers was just a part of the first phase of our curriculum review cycle.
Um, this year's MIGs have been impacted by House Bill fourteen-ninety, in which the state took a year to rewrite and adopt the new Missouri learning standards for science, social studies, English, and math. Um, typically the MIG revisions process will span for an entire year, but because of, um, the board, uh, Missouri Board of Education not solidifying those copies until April, we were kind of fast-tracked on that. Um, I was able to serve on the Elementary Science Committee and we also wanted to thank Jerry Lee for his service on the Math Committee. It's much appreciated.
So when our team of teachers and administrators came in, they took into account the new Missouri learning standards, um, both for the content and the structure of the standards, uh, as well as our college and career readiness skills and our local needs. Um, and so this team of teachers worked together. Uh, we also got input from students, administrators, parents, and community members before we brought it to you tonight.
We would like to recognize the work of the Teachers and Curriculum Department for, uh, their effort put forth on this process. And, um, I'm gonna speak about the K-five science MIGs. It was really interesting to listen to the teachers collaborate and process the new standards. Some of the highlights were that we went from an average of thirty-five standards per grade level to fifteen.
Wow.
They were excited. Um, another aspect that is pretty amazing is it is not just about content, but it's about doing science. So these new standards blend, it's called three-dimensional learning, is the new buzzword. And they blend process or cross-cutting concepts, science and engineering practices, and content. So kids are automatically applying that as they're, um, learning about the science. And as Dr. Frederick knows, PBL, Problem or Project-Based Learning, is huge in science and these standards pretty much write their own units for that. So, we're, we were very excited about that.
Yeah, and for the six-twelve social studies standards, the way they came out, um, they had already grouped the standards together for us in themes, um, which is really nice when we are going to write curriculum, because that makes it much easier to write project-based learning units, because they've already grouped the standards for us into themes or units that we can use when developing curriculum.
So next year, as we move into the second phase of our cycle, we will be bringing back those same teachers again to collaborate, um, in teams to develop the curriculum that will support our major instructional goals and also to select resources that will be most appropriate for our problem-based learning, project-based learning units. And, um, we are also looking forward to reviewing resources with all of our stakeholders to ensure that we provide engaging material for students that aligns with our research vision. With that, do you have any questions or comments?
Of course you know you're going to get a question. But we'll start with Jerry.
And this is a question on the learning standards.
Okay.
Which you seem very happy with them?
I'm much happier than where we.
Where we were, okay. That was kind of my question, because I, I, I was, are you really that happy with them, or that's what we got? Or, and I know they're better than they were, but my concern was where, okay, where are the potholes?
Yeah.
In this, in the new standards that you're concerned about with what you're doing now? And I know it's, we're just talking about a small, those areas, but I know there's potholes on, in them. Have they been of concern or an issue with you that we couldn't overcome, or it's been a problem? Uh, because they're not perfect and they never will be, but I was just curious from your standpoint. You're deeply involved, but you're having to live it now. The teachers have to live it now.
The nice thing about the science ones is the committee, uh, worked very hard and lots of very deep, rich conversation about students and what they needed to know and be able to do. And where we ended with the Elementary Science Committee, we were not as close as what I wanted us to be. Um, but they allowed the science teachers of Missouri to, uh, they put a big push out for review and they were, uh, the state was able to take some of their comments and they whittled some of the standards down even further. The ones that would be more singleton, factoid-type standards were weeded out and the ones that are still kind of like that would be implanted in a problem or project-based learning unit that would be very easy to, to just keep on going.
It wasn't real difficult on this fast track? Because I know we did a lot of implementation back before. I mean, we were way ahead of the game compared to other districts. So this fast track wasn't as bad as it could have been for maybe some districts right now, panicking.
We were able to be very flexible with our, um, the approval of the standards and I feel like the teachers responded very professionally and thoughtfully and, and we were able to.
Good.
That's what I would say. All the feedback I got from teachers that came in to work and review and, and go through, they were all very happy.
Yeah. I'm gonna just interject that both of these ladies do a great job of communicating to people and bringing them along all the time. So I think the information that went out to teachers helped build that trust and that comfort level, so kudos to them.
So is, is it a matter of less is more?
Really think that I'm not gonna get my question?
Well, there's that. I mean, is it a matter of less is more in terms of the standards going from thirty-odd down to fifteen? I presume it's not less than half the amount of knowledge we want our students to have. So is it a matter of clarifying and focusing?
Um, you know what is amazing? They're probably gonna learn more with the fifteen standards than they did with the thirty-five. Because the thirty-five were very specific factoid standards and these fifteen are what we call performance expectations. So those kids, they're the, um, they're, to me, they're the, uh, top of the pyramid for what you would want them to know and be able to do and they don't list all that little minutia they have to know in order to get there. We're just looking at that, that ending product.
And I'd say for us, we have almost the same amount of standards that we did before. It's just the way that they've grouped them. I think it's much easier for teachers to be able to use and teach, because they don't have to do the work to group it. It's already been done for them.
Jill, the teachers that you accumulated to look at these and consider them, was that entirely volunteer-based? Or did you tap some people, or how did you come up with that group that you used?
Uh, I started with my CDC and I asked them, who are the teachers? I'm sorry, Curriculum Development Council. So they are the leaders in our building, the department heads at our building. Um, and so those individuals were contacted and especially for six-twelve, we have a lot of specialty AP classes and, you know, elective classes. So I asked them to talk to the teachers who were teaching those classes and then it was all volunteer-based and I didn't have an issue getting teachers and they wanted to be a part of it.
Is that just extra for them, or is that something that would be embedded into their day, or are they giving extra time for that?
Uh, they, they came in together to work as a team during the school day. So it wasn't something extra, absolutely.
For elementary, we have what we call the Super Curriculum Development Council, which is one K-two teacher from every elementary site and one three-five teacher from every elementary site. They were kind of a captive audience, but they didn't complain too much.
But it's representative because of that. Okay, thank you. First of all, thank you. Thank you very much for presenting and thank you for your patience as it keeps changing. I mean, it just keeps changing.
We were sweating it because in March, they, the board still hadn't made a decision that there were changes from March to April.
I just, I, I can't imagine and then have to work that fast to turn it around and, and stay on target. So I just wanna acknowledge that. And I feel like I'm speaking a new language, so if I miss, miss, um, speak, then help me please. But we just sat through, Charles and I and Denise and Mike Dawson just sat through the MSBA, M-SIP update and the standards changing and all that kind of stuff. So it was very enlightening. With that being said, one of the takeaways from those sessions under student achievement was that we're about six-ish years out to actually comparing apples to apples and oranges to oranges in terms of our student assessment data. So that's exciting. It's super exciting. So with that in mind, I, I don't know if our I-ready, if, let me ask a different question. What assessments do you see can currently be in place at a district level to assess our students' learning so that we do get an accurate snapshot in terms of, of these areas?
You wanna go first or you wanna go first? Okay, um, in science, there are not a lot of assessments. I will tell you that to do science, honestly, I think we can teach everything through science, because you have to do.
You can make a good argument for that, right?
You have to do everything. So honestly, when we look at I-ready, I would look at informational text scores. Because if their informational text reading is high, then they're gonna be able to read the science and, and understand that. In math, I would look at that problem solving and that number sense and being able to, you know, manipulate and that kind of thing. So although we don't have a science test, we test a lot of the processes and skills that kids need to be successful in science. So as far as the standards now and what we have now, I can find that data in, in the assessments that we're currently giving.
Okay.
And to piggyback on that, I would say the same thing. Um, I've also discussed with some of our leaders that when they come in to write curriculum, they're also going to write some assessments that are aligned to standards. So there's, there's some things that we can use there too.
Because I know, or, or, from what I understand is we can have a snapshot of how our students did this year for six years, but we can't really track the progress based on the, is that, am I, was I a good student in my session?
We'll continue to move for a few years.
It does give us good information, but I think some of the other pieces that we're about with problem-based and, and problem-based learning and project-based learning, helping kids be problem finders and problem solu, solution creators.
Solutioners. No, just.
But I think that whole piece that we're on is that part, that is part of the plan of all, but, but the combination of the two is gonna give us, so the, the combination of the measures is gonna help us get rolling back up.
And I guess I would just say that I would, if you all come up with some assessments that our district needs to measure what we need to measure until the state catches up with theirs, you know, I think, I think we'd love to hear what that is as well, so.
I think the, the challenge is the complexities of quality assessment, right? So the stuff that is out there sometimes is simplified, it's about rank and sort, it's about the things that we're not really all that interested in, right? So it is back to our professionals to build quality assessments that are, uh, you know, given at the classroom level, that have flexibility, that give teachers the information. Unfortunately, they may not always give this board table real confidence and great information because they're not comp to NICS or OZARC or across the state. Uh, but they are things that our teachers are talking about amongst each other and working to improve, uh, results for kids. So it's that balance of what are those things that we can use to have comp, uh, comps and those things that we can never have comps and they just need to inform great instruction at the classroom level, so.
I think particularly as regards science, we may be victims of our own success in the best possible sense. Because if the new standards actually focus on the doing of science. Because if the new standards actually focus on the doing of science, that's not an easy metric to identify. And somehow, if we have more nuanced standards, we have to have more nuanced assessments.
And that, I think that the project-based and the problem-based learning with that the kids trying to solve problems, that's probably the best way to assess those standards. So it lends itself really nicely to our vision for right now.
One thing I have to conclude with, having lived in this world for many years, I think it's important that, that when we talk about MiGs, major instructional goals, and how critical it is that folks understand these are local. These are written by our teachers based on what our kids, our expectations, what our students know and will, you know, know and can do by the time they graduate. So when you talk about the national standards, there's been national science standards since back in the day. And then there's been state show me standards since back in the day. And those have always been utilized as guidelines in the minimum of what we want students to know and be able to do. And then in Springfield, the beauty of the local piece of curriculum is that then teachers, those that are working with students in the field have the opportunity then to come together and look at the standards and then develop more rigorous, if we choose, or, you know, at a different grade level. But I think we pretty much try to stick with that. So this is that piece and folks talk or think that we don't have local control. We do. This is the point where we do have that local control of our curriculum and what that instruction looks like. So I think that's a big piece that I wanted to mention, just kind of as a reminder. Then also I just wanted to tell you how excited I am to see that kindergarteners are going to learn that they are animals. When I was looking at this, this goes way back. Back in the day, it was, it was a huge thing.
Several cents of the word.
That's what I was thinking.
For elementary teachers, at what point in the, in time do you reveal to students that they are animals? As a human, they're an animal. And I just thought that was so much fun because that was one of the first things revealed to me, going from secondary science to elementary science. So I was excited when I read that kindergarten MiGs that we're going to do that in kindergarten.
Want to follow up on your first comment? I won't test the second comment. And, and it would probably, hopefully support this, but in this whole process, one of the confusing things that a lot of people had was the differences between standards, curriculum and MiGs. That, because we, through the whole process, you get wrapped up in not the what, but the hows, which is curriculum and MiGs, not standards. And it's really hard to explain to people what drives what for just the person on the street. The standards aren't how we're going to do it. That's the expertise we have in that classroom. And the people like yourself who helps develop that and works every day to make that happen. But those aren't the standards. And so there was just a lot of confusion of getting through that weeds of understanding the differences between those. And, I mean, even as board members, sometime we get, I get confused and make sure that we're in the right weeds here.
There's a lot of different lenses.
Absolutely. And I just think that's really important that is, as Denise said, once you get those standards, everything else is local. And it should be. And that's the way we ought to be doing it and making sure that happens, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Excellent presentation. Annie's.
It was really good.
Okay, moving on. Six point oh six professional learning plan. And that was an information items, no vote. Will be, it will be a vote regular, but that was an information item. Okay, moving on. Six point oh six professional learning plan. Thank you, Dr. Anderson.
Good evening. One of the many, many, many requirements from DESI is that one percent of the foundation formula funding be given to each district to be set aside and utilized for professional learning. And so during the restructure last year, professional learning, that department was moved over to elementary learning and secondary learning. And so Kathy Gross has the opportunity in her department to serve the teachers in both of those units, under both of those units. And we are certainly fortunate to have Kathy Gross as our Director of Learning and Development. We just completed our first of a three-year plan. And this plan was developed for teachers by teachers. We thought they were the best ones. What do you need and how can we best give that to you? And so in making this three-year plan, I'm going to turn the time over to Kathy to share more about the process as well as the intended outcomes as we continue with this strategy. Kathy?
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. It's a pleasure to see each of you tonight. Thank you for this opportunity. So as Dr. Anderson mentioned, as the Director of the Department of Learning Development, it's my privilege to get to work with an amazing group of people that we call the PL Advisory. The state calls them the PDC. So if you're reviewing the requirements, you'll see the term Professional Development Committee. In our district, we made the intentional decision a couple of years ago to refer to ourselves as professional learning that, rather than professional development. And the PDC became the PL Advisory several years ago as well. And we just haven't gone back to the PDC name. But we are following all of the requirements that DESI states for a PDC at the district level. You might be curious to know who those people are. And tonight, we have one representative from our advisory and I'd like to recognize Kitty Lou Maxon, who's one of the champions, who represents many people on this advisory. And you can see our structure, but Kitty Lou is a person who served as one of the appointed representatives for SNEA. And she served for several years and brings the perspective of that, the teacher organization. But also as she goes back to the classroom, we have found out that she gets to continue to serve for SNEA. The new president has approved that as well. And so we're excited to have her voice of experience, but still bringing that perspective as a PL Advisory member. And you may or may not know that we do elections for who these teachers are. So that all Springfield public school teachers have the chance to choose who is representing them via an election. And that's part of our organizational procedures. So one of the things that, this particular document that I follow with a lot of the things that our department and our advisory does is that it says that yearly, the Board of Education needs to approve our organizational procedures, our plan and our budget. So that's the real reason I'm standing before you tonight. In our organizational procedures, we have a graphic that you see here on the left-hand side that quickly summarizes the work that the PL Advisory does. So when you think about all the things that they're bringing to the table, the exciting thing is that their input helps us prioritize from a teacher's perspective and helps us keep things relevant. And so they do that though using disciplines of dialogue and discussion within our advisory. They also view multiple sources of data before they make decisions about a plan. And so what you're looking at this year is actually the second year of a three-year plan. We're asking you to allow us to continue the work that we started. And one exciting thing that I think that the PL Advisory was brilliant in doing is that we had always done a one-year plan until last year. And I think it's pretty cool that the years that we were unveiling Ignite, our teacher advisory had the wisdom to know that it makes sense for us to have a three-year plan for the professional learning that accompanies that. And I think that that shows that we are doing everything we can as an organization to collaborate and to work together. And that's an example of us not being a silo, that we are collaborating and thinking about the big picture as we support the efforts that need to happen. So you probably recognize this infographic. If you were on the board last year, you have a copy of the complete plan as one of your attachments with tonight's agenda item. But this is a quick way to summarize what the plan has. And it was intentional that the advisory members wanted our plan to support the educator evaluator system that was new as well. So not only did we know that Ignite was a big initiative in our district, we also knew that teachers throughout our district and our leaders were adjusting to a new evaluation system. And so we kept that in mind as we wrote this three-year plan. And so the whole overarching goal of this plan is to support the implementation of the SPS educator performance standards and quality indicators. And so that's an exciting thing that we've been able to partner with HR to find out what are teachers choosing as their area of emphasis for their growth plan? And we're trying to make sure that we're designing things that support that growth. So that's another example of collaboration. But if you want to just look under, you know, under that big umbrella, what are our focus? Because it's important to have a focus. Because if you don't, you really don't get anything done with any of it because it's too scattered. So everything that money goes toward can fit under one of these three categories of person-centered relationships, 21st century learning or content knowledge and curriculum. So for instance, what you just heard from the curriculum specialists, they partner with us and we with them to make sure that teachers are getting opportunities for their professional learning in specified areas as well as in generic areas of pedagogy that are so important for teachers to be successful. You might be curious to know how your work ties to our work. So you guys have worked hard on the strategic plan. And it's really exciting to me that when I read all of those three focuses, I see my work represented and I see the work of the PL Advisory represented. And I think that that's an exciting thing to look at. Specifically, if you look at Focus One and you read the very first or second bullet that each student will have equitable access to engaging, relevant and personalized learning. Well, let's think about that. How would that happen if we weren't assuring that our teachers are on the right track with their professional learning? We cannot expect them to just depend on the, the degree that they got when they got their first teaching certificate. And so that belief in continuous learning is a passion for not only me and my department members, but for every PL Advisory member. I think Kitty Lou can attest to that, that we have very passionate and inspiring meetings when we get together because we all really care about what it is we're representing and, and the impact that it can make. The second focus on your strategic plan talks about having an empowered and effective teacher and leader. And I think that that's a direct tie. And so we're really excited about the influence that we can have towards supporting the things that you have chosen as your focus as well. One thing that I wanted to include in what we're providing for you tonight is just information about the projected budget. So one of my habits is that each time the PL Advisory gets together, I give them an update of this pie. And it changes sometimes based on what we were predicting and what the needs actually are. But we are always in the ballpark of what we know our target is, of spending that one percent money and then making sure that the categories that we're spending money in tie directly to the plan that you have approved and that the expenditures fit under the permissions that DESI states. So there are some things that are permissible and other things that aren't. And I'm a pretty good watchdog on that. And so you can see the pie here as far as what we plan to do for next year. Our prediction is that our one percent amount will be approximately what it was this year. But there's really no way of knowing until the very last minute, which makes it fun. But we coordinate with the finance department. I've been talking with Kim Mulvaney lately about this year's one percent. And we will continue to do that for next year. But the budget you're looking at right now that I'm asking you to approve for our PL Advisory for next year's one percent represents $485,000, which is what we're predicting. But we may need to adjust that. So you may be curious about these categories and what examples might represent each of these. So for instance, money to sites. Well, even that isn't just like Lucy Goosey, here's some money, have fun with it. We really, in our system, have a systemic way that we want support so that it can be high-quality professional learning. And so on a yearly basis, we pull teams from every school together to be part of an SPLS workday. And they literally make the plan for the next school year of what they want their professional learning focus to be at their site. So it's a leader and a group of teachers from every site who's making that plan. And then we see it as the advisory and our department members' job to support their efforts and to help them with any questions they have. Our goal is to build their capacity to do their own learning and to have ownership and pride in their professional learning at their site and to have that tie into the things that they have chosen as their emphasis. Because our sites have autonomy and our sites have a lot of different needs depending on their students. Something I learned several years ago from the work of whole faculty study groups is that professional learning is no longer something that is just what teachers want. It is about what our students need us to learn. And so to keep that student in mind and to think about, when we bring those teams together, that's the way I frame it with them. What is it that your students need you to pick as a focus for next year? And so that's powerful. Here are a few other examples of how we collaborate with others and how the PL Advisory keeps things in mind for the big picture. So I already mentioned the three-year timeframe with Ignite. An example that's related to the pie chart of the budget that you just saw is that I met with Dr. Lemon, Dr. Hackenworth, and we negotiated who was going to be at the kickoff and what the one percent money could afford to pay them. Because it's a, it's a non-contract day when the year two people will be coming to the kickoff. And so I plan for that part of the one percent to pay for those people to be at that date. So that's an example of us communicating with each other to plan ahead, to get what needs to be done, done for the teachers for the benefit of the students. Another example of what the PL Advisory does and what our department does is that we serve as a wealth of resource and information. So we often get calls and emails and requests for resources and we are happy to provide those. And I think that something I'm most excited about is that each time we have new PL Advisory members, because our organizational procedures do require some term limits. And so we're building capacity in that way as well. That when they are participating as a teacher on PL Advisory, they are learning a lot just by serving as well. And it's a commitment that we appreciate them making. The growth mindset graphic here is just another representation of how we're partnering with HR to make sure that the emphasis that the teacher chooses for their growth plan is something that we make sure we're ready to provide resources with and that we're supporting efforts district-wide on that. SPS Now is an example of how we coordinate with the curriculum department. And our PL Advisory members give us input on sessions that they think would be applicable or needed for their peers and for themselves. We don't just go by what we think though. We also do a yearly needs assessment. And so the PL Advisory spent almost a full day analyzing data from the needs assessment just a couple of months ago to make sure that we know what the response is to what we've tried to do in the plan so far. We're using that as one of the indicators for a measure of success as a baseline for our three-year plan. And we'll continue to use multiple measures for the second and the third year of the plan to see how it's going with the focuses that we've chosen. This final graphic shows project-based learning and you've heard a lot about it from our colleagues who were right before me. And this is just another example of how it's important that the things we offer, the things we spend money on for resources, supplies, like for instance, a stack of books that was used in a summer learning for PBL is paid for by that one percent money substitutes during the school year for a teacher who's trying PBL to go visit another teacher who's pulling it off successfully. Those are examples of how this money is spent. Those are examples of how this money is spent. I'd like to end my presentation tonight by celebrating. The Missouri guidelines do specify that the 1% money and the PL advisory, some of the roles and responsibilities of the PDC is what they call it, is to support early career teachers. So, during the first two years, the state says that there has to be support for teachers, and they refer to it as beginning teacher assistant program. Well, for the 12th year in Springfield Public Schools, we've had the opportunity to have a very healthy support to early career teachers that we refer to as STEPUP. And I heard what you said about acronyms, so I'm gonna tell you what it stands for. STEPUP stands for Supporting Teachers Examining Practices and Uncovering Potential.
How long were you gonna give me to figure that out on my own?
Well, I'm gonna give you an article that explains it in just a second. But I just want you to know that this is something that our district has been recognized for in the past, and we were really happy about that. But what I'm here to share with you tonight is that one of the people in my department, her name is Alicia Moore, she's a Springfield Public School graduate, she's a former Teacher of the Year nominee, and now she's a professional learning specialist in the Learning Development Department. She is one of our STEPUP coaches, and she wrote an article from her perspective and told our STEPUP story very eloquently, and it was recently published in the May 2016 journal. That's well-respected in the world of education. It's called Educational Leadership. So, I have brought you a copy of that article tonight, and what I want you to know is that the PL advisory members, when they're prioritizing funds, have never hesitated to prioritize that support to the early career teachers. And there are rules that say we can't use that 1% for salaries, but we do use it for the supplies that we need for their learning, for the substitutes that we want to provide for them, so they can see a master teacher, those types of things. And this board, I know not all of you have served years and years, but some of you have, and the Board of Education of Springfield Public Schools has supported STEPUP for now 12 years. And I want you to know that we appreciate it, and that recently, as a result of this, we, our department, had a new vision of inspiring growth and increasing capacity. And we talked about how we wanted our influence to be beyond just Springfield Public Schools. And then, lo and behold, Alicia got published. And we've already had a board member from Michigan and a specialist from Pennsylvania contact us. As a result, we've done a Google Hangout with one of them already to talk about how they might replicate support to their teachers. And then, recently, we had someone from Missouri contact me this week. So, I just wanted to celebrate that and tell you thank you for your support. And my final slide, as I pass this out, is that we have the wonderful opportunity of impacting thousands of lives. As teachers, I think that that's the real reason educators go into education, is because we wanna make a difference. And I recently saw this on a tweet, that they say the average teacher impacts 3,000 students. And so, what I'm so excited about is that we, as a district, are being intentional about making sure that our teachers continue to be learners, and that they're well-equipped to make a difference in the lives of thousands of students. And it's an honor to be a part of that.
Questions, comments?
This is half comment and half question.
Okay.
Because I recognize that you were focusing on young teachers partly, or maybe mostly, because they tell you you have to. In my mind, and I'm not a teacher, in some ways, the younger teachers are coming more equipped, because people who've been doing this for a long time have a lot to adjust to right now. So, I'm kind of more interested in your perspective on where we should be putting resources, because for me, as someone who had to adopt when I was in the prosecutor's office and we went paperless, that freaked me out. And I needed a whole lot more support than some of my younger colleagues. So, I'm wondering how you're balancing that and what your thoughts are.
I think the beauty of that is with the new educator evaluator system, every single educator gets to choose a personal growth emphasis. And so, we can honestly say that every Springfield Public School teacher is thinking about what they think they want to work on, and that we are all on board to support their efforts. And so, I think that that's an exciting thing, that I used to feel that when I, I used to be a STEPUP coach. When I left the principalship, I went to be a STEPUP coach. And as I was like looking with fresh eyes at our department, I thought, it seems like, I think people thought that that's all our department did, was just STEPUP. And so, when I became the director, one of my personal goals was to help the people that report to me and I make sure that we all understood that we were supporting every teacher and every leader in Springfield Public Schools. That was our job. And so, to make sure that our mission and vision reflected that, I felt was my responsibility. And then, to make sure that our actions follow that is another responsibility. So, I will be honest and say that right now, we have five STEPUP coaches, and during the school year, their time is consumed with supporting the early career teachers. Yet, they also have a commitment with me to make sure that we're doing things for all teachers. And so, some of the ways we're doing that is by participating with other departments. We provide professional learning opportunities throughout the year and throughout the summer for anyone who will come. So, there are some things that are required as a part of STEPUP, yet we also have teachers who aren't in STEPUP who are coming as well. And so, I know that that's kind of a long segmented answer to your question, but the reality is there are lots of ways that we have to make sure that everybody's getting what they need. And the PL advisory is a great barometer for that, because we have a combination of experience represented on the advisory. So, their voice is heard, because we have people at all stages of their career as an advisory member. And I think that helps us keep it balanced.
And I think Jerry has a quick question?
Quick comment and then a question, because, I mean, I know we're here to make sure kids are learning, but our most mission-critical resource that we have is our teachers, to make that happen. You said probably 10 times, 1% money, 1% money. That's a minimum state requirement, correct?
Correct.
We have spent more than 1% historically on professional development.
Correct.
Where are we today? Are we at 1% on professional development? Or are we spending, quote, "some of our own money" on professional development to do this? Because I know we have been much higher than 1% historically to do that. And so, I, that concerns me a little bit if we're just meeting the minimum standards on professional development. And so, I don't, I just, because you said it several times, and maybe I was just, maybe I was paying too much attention, I don't know.
Well, I, yeah.
I mean, I, as you know, I'm a huge believer in professional development, and I think it's critical. And that's an investment that we make in our resources. And so, I, if we're just spending 1%, I have a concern. I'll just be blunt and lay it out on the table, because I know we spent more in the past.
Right. So, you have, you're correct that we have a history of spending considerably more. We are still spending more, and the example I could give of that is that my salary and the salaries of the people in my department don't come out of the 1%. So, the district is continuing to support that. I will be honest and say that we experienced a downsizing of our department, and so, we don't spend as much more as we used to, but we do still spend more, and we're very thankful for that.
Some of the other things that we've picked up in that space would be our blended learning coaches. So, that's again, another support for learning development of our teachers, and they team up with Kathy's department in learning development. So, we're, yeah, we don't get to spend any of our 1% on salaries.
Correct.
But we have a large team that work together either through STEPUP or blended learning or Ignite support. That all comes out of local money.
I mean, I guess my question is, we can put it in different buckets and call it different things, but is it still professional development? Whether it's salaries that are out of the 1%, or what, what do you call it?
Right.
I don't really care what we call it. Is it professional development, and how much are we spending? If we've significantly reduced that, I have a concern with that. And so, I, that's just...
I would say, in general, we've probably increased it by the time, if you looked at the blended learning coaches that we've put into supporting the Ignite initiative on top of Kathy's department, you know, as comparison to the staffing that you had in your full department, because those positions didn't exist outside of it. So, FTE, I think total load is more, they're just in different spaces than they were historically.
I think Jerry makes a really important point. I mean, everything is an expense, particularly in budget time, but this is an investment. I mean, this is an investment I would have no trouble making whatsoever. And I do think it would be good to get sort of the effective impact of whatever shuffling has been happening. I think that would be good to know. But as somebody who's had to deal with professional learning or professional development in my other life, this is the way professional learning ought to happen. Frankly, the, even in terms of process, I mean, there's a democratic element to it. I mean, it's voted, so it has street cred, as it were, in terms of the teachers who are going to be utilizing some of these resources. And what impresses me most, I have to be honest, is that it is tied in very significant ways and accountable ways to learning outcomes. It both is driven by the learning outcomes we want our students to achieve by way of teachers helping them achieve them, and it also drives those learning outcomes. So, without having any particular institution of higher education in mind, this is the idea who you're gonna be talking about.
Thank you.
Thank you.
12 years ago, and when we first funded STEPUP coaches, was, the reason was, and you can correct me anytime, that was because we were losing so many people that we had invested in. We paid their salaries, they came in, they weren't getting the support they needed, and our data showed we were investing, and they were leaving, and we were hiring new, and they were at a much higher percent rate than if we could keep them. And so, this, and we presented at national meetings about, because our data showed, once we started supporting those people, they stayed with us at an extraordinary rate, much more than they did before we had this program. So, I, although the professional learning, I think is, I agree with everything said with that, this support of new teachers hasn't changed to me. They need to do different things, but they still need the same support. They're in a, they come through four years, and then they're all of a sudden in a classroom, and they've got, they've got, they need people who are not their supervisors, who are evaluating them, and they need all these things that the STEPUP program did. And I don't see it as less of a need. I continue to see it as more of a need, because I think there are expectations for first-year, second-year, third-year teachers are more now than they were 12 years ago. And I think it's more difficult than it was 12 years ago for them to step in. I don't care how, where the institution is, how they prepare them, it's just different. And all of a sudden, you have all that, we're doing other things to support them too, but I don't want us to ever leave what STEPUP was intended to do. It's great to do all the other things and to add to it, but I think if we invest, they'll stay, they'll be here, we won't be having the huge turnover rate of that first and second-year teacher, which just then, we gotta start all over again, and all those of us that were teachers, I'll just shoot for myself. I wasn't very good that first year or two, and I'm not sure, I hope I didn't do any damage, but I'm not sure, not sure I really helped people as much as I could have. So, I think this is what this is about, and I just think we designed it, and I know it's changed from 12 years ago. I mean, it's still about the same purpose, and I really still support doing what we're doing with our new teachers, and adding that to their, to the other professional learning that's taking place out there too.
We appreciate that, and I think it's exciting to think about the history of how teachers who have been in STEPUP are now district administrators, they're Teachers of the Year nominees. It's neat to see that we've been doing it long enough that we're seeing the impact throughout our system. And if we are privileged enough to continue to do it, I think that eventually, every early career teacher will have had STEPUP. And the whole concept was that at the beginning of the pipeline of their career, they would have strong pedagogy, to have a positive classroom environment, strong classroom management skills, how to engage, like, one of our requirements was cooperative learning before we had the ERP, engaging, relevant, and personalized. But when I think about our goal for professional learning, not just for STEPUP teachers, but for all teachers, we want a professional's learning to be engaging, we wanna practice what we preach, we want it to be relevant to what they need, and we want it to be personalized. And the coaching model of STEPUP is as personalized as you can get, and so, we're very thankful for that opportunity.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to our agenda item 8.0, public comments. At this time, Ms. Lou, do we have any public comments on non-agenda?
I've got seven.
Comments?
We have, we...
I'm sorry, I'm just trying to move us right along.
You sure did.
Don't tell we're just a couple of them saying...
I just skipped seven, okay.
Nothing much there.
It's unfinished.
Keep it unfinished.
Real estate purchase, 7.01.
She's trying to... Slow it down.
You got it now.
I've got 30 minutes. 20.
Good change.
I have to leave at 7:00.
Yes, this, this conversation will take a little bit of time. The whole seven section, sorry. Okay.
A few things.
Here we go. So, yes, on our agenda this evening is real estate purchase, 2525 West College. And I have provided in the board docs posting some of the historical information, and this is not the first time that we've discussed this, that we've handled this as a closed-session item regarding real estate. But to sum it up, basically, the district has an opportunity to make a purchase of a building that has an appraisal of $5.8 million, and ultimately, all that we will pay for it would be approximately $817,000 plus the interest on it. And the reason behind that is that we have been reimbursed for each of the years that we have rented this facility by Early Childhood Special Education funding. And the, the reason for the change is it's driven by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. A new ruling came out that requires them to basically change the way that they're reimbursing. And so, that also causes us to no longer be able to continue in the pattern that we have been. But in lieu of simply cutting off the reimbursement, they did come up with this proposal that if we would pursue a purchase, a lease purchase, have it funded over an eight-year period, they will provide for us the principal reimbursement over an eight-year period as well. So, at the end of the day, the Springfield School District would own the asset and have paid very little relative to the overall value for it. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Questions or comments?
Perfectly clear.
Yes.
Yes, you did.
Yeah.
I will, I will add, one thing I was not yet able to share with the Board of Education is that I, Sunday, I sent the board posting to Mr., Dr. Langford, the Deputy Commissioner of Education, and he's been my contact through this process. And already today, I received a letter back acknowledging, I had provided you with an estimated calculation, I did not go in and change that on board docs. The letter acknowledging it indicates, it's very, very close, I had indicated that, I assumed that they would reimburse us approximately $3,245,000, and the calculation comes up ever so slightly larger than that. They will reimburse us over an eight-year period, beginning fiscal year 18, $3,247,534, again, over an eight-year period, eight installments of that. three million, two hundred and forty-seven thousand, five hundred and thirty-four dollars, again, over an eight-year period, eight installments of that. So. So that's the new news.
Okay, so this is an item that we do need to take action this evening. I think. I'm not tracking well this evening, it appears, but anyway, I do believe we need to take action on this. So at this time, do I have a motion that the board approves the contract for purchase of Shining Star Early, Shining Star Early Childhood Learning Center, twenty-five twenty-five West College, for four million, sixty-two thousand dollars?
And I did modify the motion. I apologize, Dr. Frederick, I did not notify you that of that. I, I didn't recognize it until I was in a conversation with someone yesterday that I didn't have the seller referenced in the posting. The owner of the property is referenced as twenty-five twenty-five W College LLC. So I added that to the motion.
LLC for, let me reread it, that the Board of Education approves the contract for purchase of Shining Star Early Childhood Learning Center, twenty-five twenty-five West College, from twenty-five twenty-five West College LLC for four million, sixty-two thousand dollars.
Correct, thank you.
Motion. Thank you. Charles Taylor, do I have a second? Second by Jerry Lee. At this time, we'll vote. The second was by Jerry Lee. Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Well, moving on, seven point oh two. Now, at this time, we need a reimbursement resolution.
Yes, and this may be a familiar form for many of you. This is standard operating procedure. When you have a situation like this where you are obtaining financing or utilizing existing bond funds, as was indicated in the information posted, for that price point differential, oftentimes, we need to do the reimbursement resolution that basically authorizes the school district to pay itself back. So assuming that we close this deal on June thirty, we will need to pay the bill that day. But we will likely not have the lease financing worked out. It may be a timing issue. So that would mean then that after we generate the check out of our existing funds, then we would reimburse ourselves using the lease purchase funding as well as the bond funding for the differential.
Questions or comments regarding this? Okay, so at this time, the recommended action is that the board adopts the resolution expressing the intent of the school district of Springfield, our twelve, to reimburse itself for certain capital expenditures from the proceeds of bonds, notes, or a lease purchase agreement. So I have a motion. Thank you. Tim Rosenberry, do I have a second? Bruce Renner, this time we'll vote. Excellent. Vote is complete. Moving on, Internal Audit Services, RFP.
So again, I have posted information relative to the process that we have journeyed through over the past several months. And it originated back in, I believe it was February, when we first had a retirement notification be provided. And as I've shared often, every time that occurs, we reevaluate how are we using our resources, including for staff positions, and ultimately resulted in our conversation regarding shifting from internal, an internal auditor position within the district to outsourcing for internal auditor services. We committed that we would take a look at it after a one-year period of time to determine if this has been the best use of the resources for the board. And at this time, I'm happy to share that we had a committee comprised of Dr. Frederick and Mrs. Patterson, and also Mr. Renner, and a community member, and could you help me with her name, Shelley Marsh?
Marshall.
Marshall, Marshall. And also Mr. Wayland Mueller, our previous internal auditor, and myself. We served on that committee, and we, we had launched a request for proposal process. We interviewed three firms and had independently evaluated the proposals at the start. And ultimately, we unanimously concluded that the right firm for this work would be BKD LLP here in Springfield. The cost that they have suggested for the work that was indicated in the RFP that aligns with the work that Mr. Mueller had previously identified and you had approved in the internal audit charter would be eighty-five thousand dollars for fiscal year seventeen. And then beyond that, we did also secure pricing on an hourly basis in the event that you would determine to continue on, excuse me, with outsourcing. So at this time, we are making a recommendation to the board that that would be how we move forward, and this is for information this evening. So we'll bring this back on June twenty-eighth for consideration of vote. And we do already have a schedule worked out where, at the very first July meeting, which now has been moved to July nineteenth, that they would meet with the Board of Education.
Questions or comments regarding the process? Bruce?
I just might say I was pleased that there were three qualified firms. I really felt like we had three qualified firms. And I think the interesting part to me is there wasn't a lot of experience with doing internal auditing in schools in the state of Missouri from anybody. But BKD had quite a bit of experience in Colorado, where they, they have an office that, obviously, there's other regulations that require that, as well as, I think, some from Illinois, although they have done specific internal auditing on, like, transportation or a certain area that they would come in and do a one-time thing. So I think we're, in some ways, kind of plowing new ground, but not, maybe in Missouri, but not in other parts of the country. And I think that, to me, was why I felt like they would be the best firm. They, they have expertise out there, and they can call on that expertise if they have questions on how it's done someplace else. But there really were three qualified firms there, which is really nice.
And that speaks, if I may add, to a question that I believe came up at one of these meetings with regard to data that supports internal auditing services for other public education entities. And we, we tried to get data, and there just isn't much out there. So we are unique in that regard.
Any other comments or questions about the process? Well, again, this is an information item, so if you have some thoughts you want to visit with Carol about, it'll be fine over the next three weeks, and we'll come back to us for a vote.
Is this the local office of BKD that would be managing this work?
But they have access to any other expertise throughout the country.
Good job.
It was riveting.
It was riveting. That's my favorite word.
Okay, very good. Moving on.
Yes.
Seven point oh four, budget update.
Are we doing a break, or are we plowing forward?
How about we take four-minute break, come back at seven fifteen?
Four minutes, everyone.
Thank you, Carol. Embry, back at the post.
Thank you very much. I, I feel like I've talked with you a lot this spring, leading up to this point in time, about the budget process. It's been great for me, and I hope so for you and for others engaging with us. So tonight is the culmination of all of those conversations. And as a reminder, this is for information, first read. We will be providing you with the official budget for approval at the June twenty-eighth meeting. At this point in time, we do not anticipate the total numbers changing. You may see some changes between function codes or object codes, potentially even funds, but likely this will be the final information to be presented. So I'll journey through. If you have any questions in the middle of it, feel free to ask me at that time and, or save them for the end. Okay, so these are our discussion objectives, and obviously, it's very important that we comply with our board policy. And also, we'll talk about the process by which we do this. We'll talk about some primary assumptions that are impacting revenue and expenditures. And I do have some information included about the impact of summer school, as well as the total projected revenue and expenditures, and that operating fund balance projection that we talk about every month. So we'll talk about the budget development process. That's that same slide you've seen over and over again, that restates our journey. And we've often talked, as we've gone through these presentations, about all the funds that we utilize within Springfield Public Schools. And tonight, I'd like to take just a little bit of a different approach to that, to help you understand that which the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education focuses on, as compared to all of our funds. And so that would be the slice of that pie. This takes away the Health Benefit Trust Fund, and also takes away the GoCaps Fiscal Agent Fund. Because while we are managing those accounts, one being an Internal Service Fund, the other being a fiduciary fund, they are not part of the governmental funds for which we also report on that annual Secretary of the Board report each year to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So we have the General Fund, the Teacher Fund, the Debt Fund, and the Capital Projects Fund. And we've shown you on this slide those portions of that. And as a reminder, the operating funds are the General Fund and the Teacher Fund combined. Okay, so while it looks like this is a simple process, and we really don't have that many documents in the end, the documents that are presented for you represent, I cannot even imagine how many hours of meetings. And I'd like to thank Kim Mulvaney, our Director of Finance, and Kara Stasell, our Assistant Director of Financial Operations, and Wayland Mueller, our Assistant Director of Financial Control, because they have been turning the wheels behind the scenes to make a lot of this happen. We've also had some significant engagement. Once again, Mike Dawson and his team, the learning team, have gone through their budget areas with a fine-tooth comb, and that has all been included in what's presented for you this evening. I mentioned that already, June twenty-eighth. So this does comply with Board Policy DB, the annual budget. It incorporates our budget priorities that are aligned with the strategic plan. I so much appreciate Kathy Gross and her presentation this evening because, as you can see, that, that is our focus, aligning with the strategic plan that you have vetted with us and ensuring that we are identifying the needs to make that work happen. We have included some zero-based budgeting in certain areas. And again, from my viewpoint, the, this budget is always ongoing. And I have that slide right there. It's not static like strategic plan, budgets are not static. It is always moving, always changing. And so we are always going to present you with the best information we have today. Yes.
Which unit, or what was the process for deciding which unit zero-based and which didn't?
It, it was more based on the particular program area. I, I would say to you that, and I'm excited about it, that Dr. Dawson has a very thorough understanding, as do our executive directors, have a very thorough understanding of the areas for which they supervise. So it really was dependent on that budget area. We have not developed a comprehensive plan yet in terms of how we would go after the rest of those programs, but we will continue that process. So budget amendments occur each month, and quarterly, we're committed to providing an assessment of all salary and benefit costs, which are approximately eighty percent of our operating budget. And then also just continuing to review budget allocations to ensure that they are appropriately aligned. And an example for you of understanding the need for being fluid would be that we do not receive our assessed valuation numbers, official assessed valuation numbers. We receive preliminary in July, we receive the final in August, just in time to deliver to you the recommended tax levy. So at this point, we are estimating, based on some very preliminary information that we've received from Green County. Also, just regular changes to salary and benefits. As a person retires and a new person is hired, that is unknown, what that amount might be. We will also, I should mention, receive the DESI updates each month. And our practice will be, as we move forward, that we align to whatever the formula calculation is for that month. And so we'll provide you with a regular budget amendment in that regard. So this summarizes for you the operating budget and the fund balance percentage projections. Estimated for FY sixteen, we are indicating at June thirty, a fund balance of forty-one million, one hundred and fifty-two thousand, four thirty-two, and that means a sixteen point seven-four percent fund balance. I'll comment about how we attain that in a moment. Also, projected for FY seventeen, operating revenues would be a grand total of two-hundred and fifty-nine million, four oh three, five thirty-nine, with expenditures at two-fifty-eight, three ninety-eight, six forty-two. That leaves us with an anticipated ending fund balance of our operating funds of forty-two million, one fifty-seven, three twenty-eight, and a fund balance percentage of sixteen point three-one percent. So you might say, well, why is it that we're going to have a larger ending fund balance, but the fund balance percentage is going down? And that is because that fund balance percentage is based on the total expenditures. So the numerator is the fund balance, the denominator is the combined expenditures for the Teachers Fund and General Funds. This is the important piece of this presentation, and that is that we have a balanced operating budget being presented for you this evening. So here are some of those major changes. I mentioned the Green County information. So we do have very preliminary information that just came in from Green County that shows a fifty-two point eight million dollar new construction amount, which is quite wonderful for our community, it's quite wonderful for us. And coupling that with originally the CPI limitation on existing AV of point seven percent, which is a disappointment. And it's not a reassessment year. We were, we were not looking at having any real growth at all. But for this new construction can make a big difference for us as we move forward. So that is new, new information that has recently been received. The state adequacy target provided by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. We are projecting for next year that it be at a six thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollar amount, and that's per weighted average daily attendee. And that is due to the seventy million in new money that was placed into the foundation formula, and also reflecting the changes to the thresholds for free and reduced lunch, special education, and limited English proficiency. We're not affected by the special education piece in our district because we don't have enough special education. So, but we do receive some additional ADA from the limited English proficiency, and certainly the free and reduced population. And the other big piece of this additional revenue for the state adequacy is that increase in our anticipated ADA from summer school operation. So two point two on assessed valuation growth, six point seven-five million on the state adequacy target and the Explorer Program. The Prop C revenue, we're anticipating an increase of five, four hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, and that's mostly due to the growth in ADA, but it is also reflecting an increase of eighteen dollars per prior year ADA. We also are anticipating utilizing Title I resources in a different way and increasing that allocation that we receive to support classroom instruction. And that would be a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar influx of revenue to offset some expenditures. So obviously, those would just be the high flyers of the revenue changes. Yes.
In English, what did you just tell me?
On, on all of it, or the last one?
Classroom, federal allocation. What, what exactly is that?
Every year. Oh, okay, specific positions?
Well, no, I don't, I don't have any, I mean, is it just in certain Title I schools, bigger, or just what's that for? I'm not sure I understood what.
So in general, we're going to use some title balance that we haven't been allocating. So we've been running a balance in that title budget every year. We're going to draw down some of that balance, and we plan to expand a couple of title preschool classrooms, and also a couple of title sites, expanding it to a couple of title sites. So that would be coaches' learning support in those sites.
Okay.
So can I ask, is, is, are we going to get an additional three fifty from the state for Title I, or we're just going to be reallocating?
We would, we would draw in an additional three hundred and fifty thousand. It's been basically rolled over in a carryover.
Yes, okay, I understand.
I can speak your language.
We're not getting any, we're not getting.
It's not a new increase in federal. It's not a new increase in federal funding.
Drawing it, we haven't been spending our fully allocated amount.
We're kind of reallocating.
Yeah.
Yes.
We're reallocating it from carryover to.
We're using it.
Yeah, we're using it.
We're going to use it.
We are using it instead of rolling it every year.
Right, we're taking it out of the bank.
There you go, we're taking it out of the bank.
Does all that make sense to you?
I think you just learned something about where your remedial class is.
No.
Work with it.
Actually, my thought was, you all are so educated that you knew to ask that. That's great, that's great. Okay, so let's talk about summer school expansion. And I know there are a lot of words on these slides, it goes against all the presentation rules, I'm certain. But it's, there's a lot of information to impart without having a five-hundred-slide presentation. So, enrollment is currently twelve thousand five hundred. Now, that may have changed since Sunday, I don't know, or since last Friday. But that, as compared to our enrollment in two thousand, summer two thousand fifteen, was seven thousand eight hundred. And the year prior to that, it was three thousand eight hundred approximately. And the average daily attendance, or ADA, as we reference it, is calculated by dividing the number of hours in total by one thousand forty-four. That's simply how they do the math to come up with that. Because when I say to you, we're expecting twelve thousand five hundred students, but we are calculating an ADA growth of one thousand five hundred and forty, you might wonder, how did that work? So, based on that growth through additional programming, we are projecting eight hundred new ADA to be generated to cover summer school. And this shows you an interesting piece of information with regard to the instructional hours impact, which is certainly our focus point, that we've increased our instructional hours for summer learning from two-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand in summer two thousand fourteen to one million, six hundred and seven thousand in summer two thousand sixteen, based on these enrollment data points. So, that's a wonderful point. The eight hundred new ADA will generate approximately five point one million in state formula money. So, recall, on the previous slide, I had, I'll take you back there, six point seven-five million. Most of that is relative to summer school. Expenditures for summer school are anticipated at the revenue level created and no negative budget impact is projected.
So, it gets out, summer school gets out?
Technically, assuming that we do a good job on our expenditures, there would be some carryover for startup of the next summer school program.
And this, I think it's always, there's a coordinate to be out of. I want to ask, I know, I know what you told us, I know what happened last year, I know what you're telling us this year. So, we're not going bankrupt because we've done that. I mean, I have that question, that now, aren't you going to go bankrupt because you're doing this? Sometimes I just have to look at.
Yeah, that's why we're increasing summer school because we want our, I mean.
Trying to run the ship in the ground.
Yeah, we're, I don't even know what to say sometimes.
But this.
This tells a story right here.
What we're trying to do is be neutral.
That's our goal.
Best scenario would be as a vacuum, right, to start planning next year. But if we're finding the revenue neutral, because that's what we've planned to do all along, based on salaries, supplies, and everything. So, it just is somehow they're missing this. Because I still have people saying, I can't believe this doesn't cost any money. I said, well, it doesn't cost you any money and it's all, it's not from our local fund.
Right.
If you try to get into it, it becomes kind of complicated, but.
Say, we're finally taking our share of the pie, that everybody else has been taking for quite some time. And it's all state ADA, so.
And it's not going unnoticed across the state.
Yes.
Because now, they are going, whoa, what are they doing in Springfield?
And, which is a good thing for kids.
Changing the game for kids.
Changing the whole game.
Yep.
And so, it's for whatever, I don't care why they're doing it, I mean, I do, first kids. But what precipitated or what pushed it? Because it's impacting the foundation formula of what we've left on the table for many, many years. And when you've got twelve thousand five hundred kids in school, half your, half your population and over half of your pre-kindergartners are going through summer school?
Wow.
How can that be bad?
Yeah.
They're watching.
I would expect our leadership in that area to expand other people's summer schooling programs. There's been a lot doing big ones, there's been a lot sitting on the sideline. And, but our presence is going to draw attention.
It's a game changer.
So, it's great for kids, it's great for staff.
Absolutely. Thinking about Bruce's comment, I think it might, it probably would be good, at least for our purposes, to have like a separate schedule that sort of, this is the summer school, increase in ADA, these are our expenses in summer school. And obviously, it's embedded into the budget, but it might be good to break it out so that we can talk about it when you get, when Bruce has those questions.
We've done that from an administrative perspective and that's all factored into the budget.
And this is a good example of that, that you have presented for us.
Give us some talking points, that's when you get those questions, you've got?
Exciting news.
Not making us broke.
No. And, and, and providing additional resources for our teachers and other staffs. And that is a game changer as well. And I've personally heard nothing negative about it, I know they're all working hard and kids are learning in the middle of it all, so that's exciting. Okay, so let's talk about some expenditure considerations, we're still looking at the operating budget. We are including, and I mentioned to you previously, we will not be bringing forward detail information with regard to collective bargaining, that type of thing. But this, these are just some high-level comments that included within these numbers would be early childhood program and learning support through the expansion of those existing Title I funds. And also, we do have additional two, parents as teachers, educators positions. Uh, let's see here.
You got it this time.
I did, okay. And then, important to note is that other shifts, other changes are being done at a cost-neutral point to the budget. So, we are continuing again to look at our resources and determine, is this the appropriate use of that resource? And is there a greater need elsewhere?
Is that just pushing the other four parents as teachers out to the next year that we've committed to?
In general, what our plan had been to say, those last six to kind of two, two, two. And we talked with Missy about the pace that we've been adding those up. And this slows the pace and allows us to do some other early childhood programming. But they're still on the radar, we're just going to.
Well, like the Wonder Years, I just, I just don't want that to get lost, that we've already, we've committed six parents as parent educators. And I just want to make sure that that's two, two, and two, or whatever the.
Part of the conversation.
Process, it's all, those are really good early childhood dollars spent in the Wonder Years and stuff.
Right. So, included in this budget, from an operating perspective, would be total current salary and benefits, one hundred ninety-four point oh eight million. The salary step in education movement, this is just to provide you with context of what it would cost if we provided a step only for all staffs, that would equate to three point three million. That's approximately one point seven percent increase overall. And then, a one percent cost of living adjustment is one point six million dollars throughout the system. So, again, this information is provided for context and we will provide you with the specific recommendations at the June 28th meeting when we also bring forward the results of the collective bargaining process. Some other items for consideration, I mentioned this to you when I talked about purchase services with regard to synergistic. But just recall that we have, there's an estimate based on the synergistic plan that was approved at a previous meeting. We are anticipating in the upcoming year of saving approximately nine hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars in utility bills. However, we are being prudent in our budgeting process and we are currently only budgeting a reduction of utilities to offset the cost of the synergistic agreement. And in that first year, it's approximately four hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. So, there's an offsetting utility reduction of that as well. Nutrition services, the reason I've highlighted this is it's a significant impact in terms of the budget. However, it is completely offset by revenue as well. And the nutrition services summer program has to be run as a community program separate from the regular nutrition services program. They operate under the same rules, but they have, it has to be coded separately on general ledger. It's in a three-thousand-function area, for the most part. I did update this presentation because I had not completely described this well. I indicated previously that there, and this was, as a result, I've had some board member individual questions and that's helped me do a better job of explaining it here on the slide. The liability insurance renewal increase coupled with worker compensation increase. So, that's two hundred and forty-one thousand, two fifty. Of that, approximately eighty-six thousand, five hundred was the liability renewal that we had previously brought.
Liability, employee liability?
Property casualty.
Property casualty, okay.
The miscellaneous reductions, it looks like a large number and one might think, gosh, who is not happy in the district? Just remember that a great deal of that is relative to the change that was impacted for the technology lease. So, this current fiscal year, we only did a two-year lease because we direct purchased that first year's worth. Okay, you may remember that conversation from previous board meetings. And so, what we see then is the lease increased, the lease amount increased. We didn't have a lease payment before, but now we have that lease payment. And that's included in the documentation provided under capital planning. So, a large portion of it is relative to that. But again, we'll continue combing through all those. So, this is a replication of that previous slide, in case you wanted to see it again after we talked about the primary changes. Again, operating budget is balanced. And we're showing just a slight change with regard to the fund balance percentage projection, but that is an ever-moving number relative to the changes that are occurring every month. And we'll continue to keep you apprised of those numbers moving forward. It complies with our board policy relative to our fund balance goal, fund balance percentage goal. Okay. Okay, so, now we're going to talk about, so what we've just talked about when we talk about governmental funds that DESI pays attention to, that we report on the ASBR, we just talked about that large section right there. Now, this is revenue that we're looking at right now. And you might wonder, well, gosh, if you keep saying that our operating funds expenditures are around eighty percent, but then the revenue is eighty-nine percent, what is going on with that? And part of that is relative to transfers that are available and just fluctuations within the Capital Projects Fund's budget because we do have changes for bond funds that impact the governmental funds. Okay, so, we're showing capital at three point five percent, debt service at seven point two, and then operating funds at eighty-nine point three. So, the debt service, you can see now, this year, we don't have that crossover refunding. I think that's on one of my slides, yes, it is, coming up on the expenditure side. So, on the revenue, this is just a slight change on debt service for current tax. And that again would be that portion of what I had commented about previously with regard to changes in assessed valuation. The capital planning M and M surcharge tax increase is going up slightly or projected to based on historical trends. And then, we have a reduction in revenue in the current year for capital and it's relative to the FEMA reimbursement. We expect that to settle by June 30. If for some reason we would not receive that June 30, then we would come back to you with a budget increase for revenue in the new fiscal year. Other changes, and these are non-governmental funds now, this is for Health Benefit Trust and GOCAPS. Because of increased participation in GOCAPS, not only are we, as we discussed previously, lowering the tuition per pupil, we are increasing participation, still resulting in an overall increase in revenue by two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, two hundred dollars. And then, the Health Benefit Trust, we are showing no change at this time. So, now we'll look at the expenditure budgets, again, the non-operating portion of that. And actually, total operating is eighty-six point three-two percent with eighty percent being close to what the salary and benefits piece represents. Debt service, again, that's the normal debt service with no special crossover refundings or refinancings taking place. The reason the Capital Projects is still higher at eighteen point nine eight eight percent is because we still have some remaining bond funds to be expended. We'll take a look at that. Debt service reduction of the refunding is nearly eighty-eight million dollars. So, if you compare this year's budget to last year's budget, that would be the primary swing. The capital planning and controlled purchases, we have a net reduction of three hundred eleven thousand, sixty-six dollars. And I mentioned before, the technology lease payments. So, not only do we have the August two thousand fifteen lease, putting that one of two payments on, we're adding in the April two thousand sixteen lease that was previously approved. So, those are added in. This also reduces all of the bond expenditure allocations that were budgeted for in the current year by twenty-two million, six hundred and sixty-four thousand, four oh five. GOCAPS, we're showing an increase in expenditures of two twelve nine seventy-four and no change to Health Benefit Trust. So, final presentation of the salary and benefit recommendations is the 28th. And, do you have any questions for me? So, I didn't include any of the slides relative to the documents. And if we need to take a look at any of those, I'd be happy to pull that up. Yes?
I can send these to you directly, too. I suspect it may be, it's attachment three point oh one, there are a lot of, there's some significant shifts between fiscal fifteen, estimated actual sixteen.
Okay, yes. I did check into a couple of those and that would be some of that information that we do need to, will be changing relative to function code. And the situation in this particular one is that that gets manually added in. And I believe it's added to the wrong line, the line above it, if you look at that swing, yeah. So, good eye. We verified the totals so many times, our eyes were getting weary. But, but that is a line-to-line differential, so I appreciate you pointing that out.
On that, on that same sheet, I think it looked like the Board of Education was going to increase the level.
That would be problematic.
You didn't get your raise?
I didn't get a raise in there, so I didn't know what happened in, why that all of a sudden jumped way up there. And it looks like it's two years.
Well, we've replicated, what occurred is a replication of the FY '16 for FY '17. And then, we've got a placeholder at the bottom for the changes by fund because it's nearly impossible in a system of this size to be able to exactly have the GL code worked out at this stage of the calendar. So, obviously, that's an opportunity for exploration.
I didn't know if we put.
I don't know what that is.
We do, I mean.
I mean, we do.
Up that big a thing. Up that big a thing.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I don't, I don't.
And it looks like the seven of us are spending that maybe.
Because even if you got a percentage increase of what you currently make, it would still be zero.
Well, that's why that jump, kind of jumps.
Yeah, I don't know what that is. We'll get that figured out and we'll get it resolved.
Phil's not here to answer that question.
We'll repost, yeah.
But I do think it's interesting because when I first came on the Board of, one of my first questions when I looked at the budget was the total for the Board of Education. I thought, oh, what's, what is this? Because it was a larger total. Went in to discover, there's a lot of things that are put into that code that is really not expenditures for the Board of Education.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
And that's just one example that if we, as a board, tried to look at all those function codes and understand everything that's being spent, we don't have the time to do that, nor is it our role or responsibility to do that at that level, but.
And I'll tell you, it varies by, from district to district. We should all be following the Missouri Financial Accounting Manual, no doubt. But even within that, there are interpretation, there's interpretation flexibility, maybe that's the word I should use. And I can tell you that, for instance, your comment about board expenses, in some districts, I know that they code all employee health insurance to the board function code, which is intriguing to me, but we don't do that here. So, I'll be, I'll be interested to see what, what went awry on this particular. So, if I do mention the documents that are posted out there, there is that executive summary. And again, all of these documents are responsive to the requirements of board policy, which aligns with statute. And so, there's an executive summary budget message. And so there's an executive summary budget message that basically tells the story in words for you, if you aren't someone who likes to really look at Excel spreadsheets, and talks about the significant changes that I have also highlighted in the presentation. Then there's a three-year comparison of revenue all funds, followed by a summary of those. A three-year comparison of expenditures by function as well, followed by a summary of that. And then a three-year comparison of expenditures by object. And if you take a look back at that ASBR report that we provided to you back in December at the conclusion of the audit, you will note that this mirrors that type of reporting structure that's provided to the state of Missouri. We're also required and happy to report the bonded indebtedness schedule that's posted out there, as well as our lease schedule for principal and interest payments. And so you'll see that those technology leases have been added in there. But then the, one of the documents that's posted out there also is this capital planning document. And this is a culmination of a change in how we've done business here. Recall that we invited principals and other leaders to input their needs, and we vetted those through a very thorough process and engaged with instructional leaders. And this then represents those items that bubbled up as being things that were important to do. It includes the listing of all the leases. So to break down that technology lease for you, August, the, the payment was, for the new year is four thirty-seven, four sixty-six. So that's approximately how much we direct purchased this, in this current year, which shifts it from a Fund Ten supply code over to a Fund Forty capital code, if that makes sense. Are there any questions for me at this time, or homework that I might share with my team that we can work on between now and June twenty-eighth?
Without getting any weeds at all, is your, the capital, because I was going to ask a question about the capital planning. comparable to last year?
It is, actually, and if you look at the, the general budget summary, I didn't reference that one, and that's kind of the most important one. It summarizes all those changes for revenue and expenditures. And then the second page of it shows you the, the two years laid out. So last year, or, I'm sorry, I've already moved on, by the way, last year is this year. And FY sixteen, that will end June thirty, two thousand and sixteen, our capital expenditure budget is nine million, one seventy-two, eight ninety-one. And for next year, it is nine nine one one, two sixty-one. And again, part of that is changes relative to those lease payments.
Can you sort of answer my other question with respect to site development of those improvements? If those were very site-driven as far as.
Right.
Location, what they truly need.
Absolutely.
So I appreciate that approach to the capital planning.
Yeah, and remember, we had a lot of needs identified, and part of those will come back to us, to you, in the form of that facility master plan discussion. And I know Dr. Jungman will comment about that at the end of the evening a little bit, so.
This is a budget from thirty thousand feet, and maybe that's where board members should be. I don't like to be at thirty thousand feet. I, I just, I, I don't like being there. I, I've never liked being there, and for some reason, that's where, in a district this big, people have put us. And I talked to Dr. Dawson about his, he gave us, he sent us the thing about personnel and how he was going to do that, and I talked to him about that, like the split classrooms. And I don't know, I think Jerry and Denise know, we've worked real hard not to have those. And we're told by previous administration, we really, you know, we have to have a few based on building capacity and the number of students there, but really, we, and so the board made conscious decisions to say, if, if you can, especially at some of our major title schools, if you need somebody else and you've got a classroom, we are willing to do that. Now, it looks like we're heading a different direction. And as a board member, I'd like input into that to say, I, I'm willing to allocate more money to make sure that doesn't happen. And we talked about academic, and, but we didn't talk about social, social, emotional, physicals, and the other things that go into that makeup of those things. So those decisions were made, and I, all kinds of meetings, you tell me, all, all kinds of meetings were held, and the budget priorities aligned with our strategic planning based on those people who were in the meetings. Now, if I was in the meeting, maybe it, it would be different, possibly. You know, because the way I understand the process, and I don't think it's any different, there's just different people there. Everybody comes from wherever they are and bring their things, and then they're kind of debated. And then somebody has said along the way, we don't, I don't need an increase in whatever area I've had, so therefore, here's what rises to the top. But then as board members, what if we say, I think that's still important? But do we ever get a chance to do that? Or do we, are we just saying, somebody has decided that, and we're, we're not a part of that decision? What if I wanted the sixteen point three-one to go down to sixteen point zero because I felt like something that wasn't included is really important? What if the board, we're, I just don't see that there's ever any input, I have, input on those things. Now, we did try something a year or two, but Denise reminded me when that was, when we said, well, what's the cutoff line? We never see what else was, that was recommended but didn't make the cut. Well, then, when they gave us all those, all of us said, well, that could be an issue because each one of us could pick one out of there, and we understand. But, so that, that became obvious that we couldn't do it that way, but I don't know. I just feel, I don't even know how, I just feel very uncomfortable because I don't know what else was out there that I didn't have an opportunity to have input on that it says as a board member, I think that, that should be there. I think that, maybe it's, I don't know, I, I don't know what it is. Maybe it's professional development, maybe we ought to spend another hundred thousand on that amount of money to make sure, as we're moving at this pace, that everybody is there. I don't know, but I don't know what was there. So I can't even say I would support it or not support it. So it just makes me, and maybe Jerry refers to getting in the weeds. Sometimes I'd like to be in the weeds, because I think, I think that's where the difference is made. I'm not sure it's made at the thirty thousand-foot level. I think the teachers are in the weeds with the kids, and I think those are decisions that sometimes we need opportunities to have input, because this is decided. Now, come on, Carol, in three weeks, I'm not coming to you and say, oh, I've got a great idea, let's just change this budget in three weeks. That's not going to happen. I, I wouldn't even do that. That would be foolish on my part. But where is it that there's ever any other input? Besides saying, um, Go Caps is great, two hundred and some thousand, I love what it's doing. What if I said, ah, maybe there's something else for two hundred and some thousand, somebody's decided Go Caps is, is it? Is that, that's an increase we want to do. So I don't know. And if I'm the only one feeling uncomfortable, then I need to know that. I need other board members to say, no, Bruce, you're way out of line, just feel uncomfortable for a while, and then jump back in when it's July first, and, you know, talk about whatever else we need to talk about. And when it's budget time, just kind of shut up and move off to the side, because this is how we're going to do it. And I'm good with that. If I'm the only one, I'm not going to sit here and try to do that. But I don't even know how other board members feel, and if they're very comfortable with what we're doing, then I, I'm good with just saying, hey, just relax, move off, you can have other input and other things. But it just seems like to me, there's, there ought to be some way for board members to have some input on other options when it comes down to that. Because I think that's our job to decide if we want sixteen point three percent or if we want, if we'd want sixteen point zero. I mean, I, I think that's our job, but I don't have an option to do it, so. That's just, and I'm going to vote for the budget. So I, I mean, I'm not, I'm just telling you that right now. I, I'm, I'm going to vote for the budget, but, because I just don't think that's a reason for me not to. But I really feel uncomfortable. That's where I am.
And I think we all appreciate having your thoughts, and we have a few weeks to reflect on that and think about it and get some answers. I, I, I do appreciate the fact that usually, administration comes back to us and, before school starts, and lets us know if we've got some class size issues and we need to, as I recall, and I don't see Jay or, or. Oh, there you are, Jay. And, and you will let us know if we have some class sizes, for example. I think Bruce and I probably reference back to some, at some of our high-need schools, where you may have twenty-seven or thirty kindergartners in a classroom with a brand-new teacher. We just hope that those kinds of things come back to us. Yeah, and so we can then, Bruce, that may be at the point then, whereas board members, we could say, let's add some more teachers. But I think you've given us some good things to think about, and I know that this is a lot of information, and I need to do a lot of reading and, and thinking, but, good thoughts, Jerry?
Comment and a good question, and I may be off-base on this, too. I may be getting in the weeds more than, I don't think so. And I understand your, your feeling, Bruce, and I, and I think that's a real balance between the board and, you know, between what, as you say, getting in, jumping in the weeds versus, I think we have a responsibility to look in the weeds. We don't have to get in, but we need to be looking in the weeds and seeing what, where that's spent. With that statement, one of the things that I guess, I may be the only one here as far as, because I get asked this in the community, and that deals with, there's not any information here with respect to how we spend that eighty-five percent or eighty percent of labor dollars. What's, what's our head count? How many teachers do we have? How many administrators do we have? Now, that may be weeds, but I get asked that a lot, about how many do you have? What makes up the number of employees that you have? Just, and that's information, I'm not looking forward from a budgetary standpoint, and I may be the only one. I, I don't, if I am, as Bruce said, you know, shoot me and I'll be done. But a lot of times, it's, that is eighty percent of our budget. That's the biggest impact that we have on our budget. And knowing what makes up that eighty-five or that percentage, to me, is a helpful piece of information as I talk to constituents and people in, in the community, knowing, you know, we got less teachers, we got more teachers, we got more administrators, we got less administrators. How, what makes that up? And if I'm off-base with the rest of you, that, I apologize, but I, that, and it's not a budget number, budget information, it's just information.
Yeah, and I covered some of that during the Sowing Benefit presentation, but I don't know that I went to that level either, so that's a great point.
What, what have we got? Is, have we got more than we did last year? We have more teachers, we have less teachers?
Right.
More staff, more support? And here again, I don't want to jump in the weeds, but I just think that's important because that is a huge expenditure for us of where that money's spent, so I.
I'm not sure it's in the weeds to look at those broad categories, to say, certificated staff, non-certificated staff, administrative, whatever the case may be. I think that's always a useful metric to have, because our primary investment ought to be in classrooms. And I think the broad categories, and we don't want to look at, and nor should we look at, a particular position in this particular school, or even a group one. But I think the broad categories makes sense.
That is a question that people have undermined, I mean.
And so in that, then, would you prefer to see that this presentation at the first June meeting restate information that was previously shared more, or?
I don't want to create work, I just, you know, this budget's got three thousand employees in it.
And, and.
Sevent hundred employees.
Right, and.
You know, that's, that's what I'm looking for, is just supporting documentation for some of that. And maybe that's, that's somewhere else that's provided to us somewhere, you know, maybe it's not the budget thing, I don't know.
I think it was in a previous budget.
Yeah.
About staffing, I know, one of the presentations.
Presentation, but we could put a staffing summary.
Yes, easily.
Since that point, from collective bargaining to everything else that we've done. As far as, when we approve the budget next, in three weeks, how many people am I approving?
Right, and I did, I did plan to talk more about everything affecting that eighty percent in greater detail once we get through the collective bargaining approval.
I'm getting in the weeds, I'm trying not to, but I just think that portion of our budget is so huge that it's critical.
So I think what I'm hearing is the board is asking for maybe a comparison of FTE last year.
Yeah, that's. Very easy to do. You'll see that there are very minimal changes.
You can do with people.
Oh, absolutely, so that, we don't, again.
Very minimal changes, I will tell you tonight, but we can certainly do that, so you have perspective on that. We'd be glad to do that. I, oh, you know, I, I do have a couple of comments at the end, but go ahead.
No, Alina. I guess I just wanted to acknowledge Bruce and the fact of, thank you for sharing your thoughts and feelings with the group, and I know it can be risky when you do that here, so I just want to say thank you for, for doing that. And then I guess maybe I have a question for everybody but Charles, since we're both the, the new ones here through this process. So, yeah, but I, I, I just wonder, you know, your comments, and for Bruce, Denise, Jerry, who've been here, you know, for quite a few years, is, is something, is something different this year than maybe four or five years ago when looking at this process? And so, I mean, because you've, you've been sitting here for many years, and so I just didn't know if you were picking up on something that's different in this process than perhaps other years? And I don't.
Personally, I don't think, I mean, each year, the board, the founder says, we, we would like to be involved earlier in the budget process. And maybe we're not, maybe as a board, we're not specific enough what that means. Carol's made lots of presentations to us.
Which, which from what I hear is a change.
That's a change.
And so that's, that's a change, okay.
So is that, is that what we need, mean by involvement? I, I think if we really, I think we'd have to be more specific that, to say, because they're, they're saying, the administration's saying, oh, you want to be more involved, okay, here we go, here's this, here's what we're doing. And if that's not what we want, then we haven't been specific enough, and then we're still saying, well, I didn't get it, you know? But I can, I, I can't say it's, and Jerry and Denise could say, but I, I don't think, I think that's been the one. In all my years, I can't remember but one time, that's when Mike Coleman was president, that we actually allocated more money to a budget based on the board saying something we want to put. I don't even remember the amount, but it was significant, that we want to put in that budget. And that's the only time. So basically, it's, we're, we haven't been, but it's always, we want, since that's one of our major things, we want to be more involved, but I don't think we've been specific enough to say what that involvement would be and when it would be. So administration just tries to guess what that is.
It is a little bit different, and I, and I think it's for the better, because I think you as, at least I feel for the last couple of years, that when you guys are looking at the budget, and you're looking at what we're putting out there, you're looking at the whole budget, the whole three hundred million dollars, and scrutinize whatever the number is with debt service and all of it. And the board sees all of it. And we've talked about all of it over, what, ten weeks, different parts of it. Somewhat in the past, we, we tend to, the board looked at a very narrow picture of discretionary funds of what's available. Do all the calculations, and oh, you've got about, I don't know, twenty-five million dollars worth to spend. Then we get fifteen pages of projects to look at and go.
Totaling a hundred and twenty-five.
Totally a hundred and twenty million dollars, and you go, gotta have, be nice, not, I mean, but we were really, from a, a board standpoint, we were only looking at a small sliver of the budget. Whereas I think now we're looking at a much more comprehensive look at the entire budget. Maybe it's not looking at, do we put carpet in Westport, or do we put this in Sherwood, which we don't need to be doing, but we do need to be look, making sure the stuff we're doing is consistent with our strategic plan. That is our responsibility, and making sure everything we're doing it. So there is a little bit of change, and I think we've kinda worked toward that over the years of getting more toward a higher level look at it, maybe not ground level, but, you know, whether thirty-five thousand feet's the right number, I don't know what the right is, how far up you go, but, you know, historically, we did look at fifteen pages of projects that were turned in, that staff had put together, and, you know, I don't have time, because I can't sit there and analyze whether that project's better than that project, because I don't know. From a project standpoint. Now, I can decide, do we need to be spending more on early childhood, professional development, or those things, that I think we have input to. Those categories of broader categories, and I just picked two, I don't, there's other ones, whether it's technology, that I think is a responsibility we have. Getting into the weeds from the standpoint of, you know, new desks at this location versus that, that's not our responsibility.
I guess that would be our question of, what's our role, what's your role? Because that's what's happened, that's what we've been doing for six months behind the scenes, is working with administrators and staff, giving feedback to principals, and then principals bringing feedback to their executive directors, who's had hours of meetings reviewing counseling versus PAT, versus title, versus this, versus that, and then working to develop something that is based on meeting the goals of the strategic plan, not a list of wishes from the board, right? The strategic plan is the vision that you've endorsed to create, and they've worked hours providing feedback regarding that product and saying, this is our recommendation. And then that's what we bring to you.
And I, and I think we have, we as a board have to do two things. We have to trust that you guys are doing that with the plan, but I think we also have to verify that, that it's happening, and, and hold you.
You?
Hundred percent.
Because you're the only employee we got accountable for those things that are, that are happening. And, and I think that's what our role is, is, as a board, um, to accomplish that.
Well, trust, trust is a big deal, uh, and that's what I've learned in, in my short time on the board, is that ultimately comes down to that, but this is a lot of money. It's more money than I will ever see in my life. And, and from my board member's perspective, Bruce, I'm one of seven patrons in this entire district. There are seven of us, and I'm one seventh of that, of, I'm, I'm one of the seven people who, who's gonna push the button on this budget. And, uh, it's a four hundred and twenty-five million dollar total expenditure, so that, I'm seventy million, no, well, sixty million, see, it's not as much. And, um. So what, what I've been doing is, is I've, I've come to the conclusion that I can't, I can't operate the district, that's, I, I shouldn't operate the district. But what I have been doing this year is thin slicing a section of the budget, um, that I have some knowledge and interest in, and working with Carol on it as we go through the year, and just see what's going on, and then I can assume that that is representative of the entire budget. So I do a very thin slice of it and kinda focus on.
A very thorough thin slice, though.
And, and I've learned a lot, and I've, I hope that whatever I've done has been helpful, more, that has been more help than it's been a nuisance to the administration getting their job done. But, yeah, ultimately, it comes down to trust, but yeah, there's, there's that moment of truth when we know that, that there's seven of us that are gonna say, go. Jerry and Denise, I, I, it'd be great to find some best practices out there for board administration relationships and process in budgeting. It's, and I'm guessing there's all kinds of ways to do it well, but boy, I just don't know. I, I don't have, I don't have a clue, Bruce, what to do. I just, I just don't.
That's a good point, but having attended, this is my fifth year, numerous, um, MSBA, NSBA conferences, I always look for those that have board administration relationships.
And, and you're not gonna find it.
And you're not gonna find a best practice, because there are districts that think they have a good practice, but there's still pitfalls and there's still things they will talk about. Now, this isn't perfect, but this is what works for us, and so I think with the transition new administration, we're finding what's working for us, but that's gonna change as our board members change.
And I, I will say that, that these presentations you've been making over these past two hundred meetings have, have, it's, it's, it's like reading the gospels or the Easter story during Lent, you know, the whole, the whole story, you do it every year. You gotta read that, you gotta read it every year, um, and, and go through and remind us of why we do this. We never get too deep in the details, but at least we understand the whys. And I think it's really, you know, it, I have no problem being told the same thing year after year after year, because each time I hear it, I hear something different. And, and so that would be something I'd share, share with you, uh, newest board members, is, is that, and I, I think this process that you've taken us through so far has been pretty doggone good, because it's so comprehensive, and I appreciate it.
I, I think one little example I'll just bring up in terms of us getting down to a program level on understanding expenditures, as I noticed as we were looking at the professional learning attachments. And Kathy shared with us one of her, uh, budget with specifics, and down to how much would be spent for travel and mileage, and, and I thought, you know, if we as a board had to read every one of those and make a comment, or provide feedback, or say, I like this one, but I don't like this one so well, we can't do that, and I don't think that's what I understand. That was my role, and I was a director in a program that I don't see as my role as a board member. I think that the strate- the strategic plan indicates what our priorities are, and one of those big priorities is supporting our, our teachers, that we, that we agree are highly effective and high quality. And so I think you see that reflected in our budget, or in the budget, uh, with a large percent that goes towards salaries and benefits. I think maybe in the past, while we, just like Jerry said, I'll tell our new board members this, when I first came on the board, what we got was a list of priorities. Now, could never really get to the heart of who developed the priorities, and who prioritized the priorities, and in what order, how they were prioritized, but that was the process then, and it touched about what, Jerry, maybe, tw- like you said, any new monies, it was basically, it's like X new monies, and here's priorities. But we never looked at what's currently, uh, expenditures, or, you know, what's been in place for the last ten years, like we have this last year. So I have a better idea of the big picture, um, and then as far as those priorities, you probably won't see a list of, I haven't seen a list of budget priorities, and that looks different that, than in past, but it feels better for me, just, again, we've, we've had a few questions I think would be great to have answered, and that's maybe changes in FTE, which again goes back to teacher, our, our, our support of our teachers, but, um, I think we've looked at the big picture of the dollars, and we're not seeing those little, little list of priorities, however they are within your presentation, because you, you have provided for us some strategic, for example, the changes within the Title I dollars, um, and adding early childhood ed, and then also, um, some of them. So, so we're seeing those, but they're just not a list of priorities, but they're within what you've been, and, and I've been keeping a notebook of your presentations, I think since December. And if you flip through those, you will see within those slices of the pie, priorities that are, that are shining through, but they're just not, um, labeled priorities. So I think it's just, it's a new process for us.
Charles? I, I would agree. I might, I'm, generally speaking, I'm pretty comfortable with the process, as I see it with the vast experience of. And, you know, I really appreciated Kathy's, uh, including that as an illustration of what she's doing, not in the context of a budget proposal. In the context of a budget proposal, not only would we be here much longer than we've already been here, which would be okay for me, frankly, I think it's presumptuous and kind of condescending for the seven of us to say, no, 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 you shouldn't have ten thousand dollars for travel, you ought to have eighty-five hundred. You know, I, and we, we have real professionals who can make those kinds of judgments. I think in Kathy's context, it was fine to give us some sense of the, you know, where the rubber hits the road. But, you know, it's, I suspect it will always be those things that e- each of us individually will say, you know, I don't know that I don't know this, and, yeah, what about X, right? And sometimes we may, X may be a little closer to the weeds, uh, than, than it ought to be. Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure thirty thousand feet's where we ought to be. I don't know if it ought to be ten or fifteen or, or twenty, but I think Denise makes a really good point that maybe even just organizing a, a document or, or our discussion in terms of the priorities that any adjustment makes, this is, this is time to break into priority one, priority two.
I think those priorities are the strategic plan.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Two years ago, we started this journey, right, where we said, uh, listening to her, envisioning excellence, students, kids, board members, parents, community leaders, this is what we said we wanted, strategies, we present on them every month, and this is the resource allocation that we believe as the leaders, that of the system that function in it every day are necessary to deliver that, and we'll try to provide you with proof, right? I mean, the data that comes out of summer school, the data that comes out of Ignite, the data that comes out of the work that, uh, this strategic plan is informing on a daily basis. Uh, the, the iReady data, that you'll see more information later this month, right? Uh, so those are the things that we'll try to help inform your knowledge of how the budget impacts, but on a daily basis, we feel it's our work to be engaging in the operations and understanding of how to make that strategic plan move. That's our job, is to move the plan, and your job is to monitor the plan, I believe, so.
Yeah, I mean, sort of the gospel according to the strategic plan, you can tell that story over and over.
Of, you're gonna get so sick of it, because that's all we're gonna talk about.
And I think it is just human nature when we're at, in the public, and I'm sure maybe people approach maybe Mr. Renner and I a little bit more, because there's still a lot of folks there we have friendships with and, and know that work within district. I often have people say, are you guys really spending X amount of dollars on this? And I can't answer that, and I really don't think I should answer that, because I, um, as a board member, um, I'm not running the show in terms of the day-to-day and what, um, this administration is doing, that's their job, uh, what kids need to, to do better. So I think at some point, we get to where, you know, that's a detailed piece that is important, that we spend what we bring in, I mean, you know, that our revenue and our expenditure is balanced, that's what's important to me, and Jerry?
But I think what you just said is, it's not as important of knowing how much you're spending, but why you're spending it. That's the role that we have to do to the community, is why are we spending it? Not that it's a hundred thousand or two hundred thousand.
Yeah, I suppose if somebody came.
Why are you spending it?
If somebody came to me and said, uh, uh, did you know that you're spending so and so? No, I didn't know that, but I do know that, or maybe, I, yeah, I know that I'm, I'm, I know that I trust what, what these professionals we've hired to do are doing. You know, that might be the right answer, and not engage them in a, a comparing numbers, but get back up to the, the, that bigger picture, which is the, or, yeah, the, the broader picture, which is, uh, where we find ourselves operating as a board.
Excellent. This is what a study session's all about, have this conversation. And we have lots to think about.
So.
Anyone wanna?
If I may add just a few more points, and I realize I didn't.
Sorry, we forgot, you're there, Carol.
No, I know, that's okay, that's okay. Well, uh, along the, I just wanna comment, um, Jerry and a few others, you've mentioned this about the, the new money and the prioritization piece, and I just wanna put that in co- into context for you. If the operating budget, I'm talking about the general fund and the teacher fund, uh, was two hundred and fifty million dollars, and let's say eighty percent of that was for staff, let's put that on the parking lot, that's two hundred million dollars. At least fifty million dollars of existing expenditures that every year, the budget simply rolled forward. So fifty million, not that those were bad things that were happening, but there was not a thorough review of why are we doing this, what is the benefit of that cost, and is that the best use of the resources we have? And that is the work that is happening now, and it would, it would be way easier for us to simply roll the budget, but we are taking time to do that thorough review on your behalf.
And I appreciate that you're looking at two hundred and fifty million dollars.
Exactly, exactly.
Because it does impact, I mean, I know eighty percent of its people, and that's our most important, but you still have to look at it.
Exactly. Yeah, and then a couple of other housekeeping notes, so I wanted to make sure and share that, but I didn't say this, and I, I should. If you, when you look at the general budget summary for the current year, you notice that our fund balance percentage has increased over that, which we reported to you at the last board meeting for treasures report, and that is because we've gone ahead, based on good faith from the information we're receiving from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, we have increased the state adequacy target from a revenue budget perspective to six thousand one hundred and forty. We fully believe that that is going to come to fruition for us by June thirty, and, um, you'll hear more about that in another time, but we did reduce it back down to six thousand one twenty-five for moving forward, so that, uh, we will be more aligned with that, which the state believes will occur. The other, uh, comment that I would make, uh, has to do with, um, the expenditure side of that world in the current year. Uh, that's an unknown, we've talked in previous meetings about the numerous GL codes we have, and that if everybody returned a thousand dollars, then we've got a big amount of budget returned to us. So that information will not be known until we get very close to June twenty-eighth. Even at that juncture, payroll doesn't happen until June thirty. Now, will we know those numbers? Yes, but could there still be some variations that occur beyond that? Certainly. So, again, we give you the best information that we have at that moment, and we'll continue to do that. So I look forward to continuing the discussion, and thank you for your time this evening on this.
That's right. Okay, thank you very much, Carol. So we have three weeks to look at all our documentation, uh, think about questions, send those to you. Okay, thank you. Uh, moving on to, are we ready to go now to eight? I've been trying to get there for an hour, but we'll get there now.
You're trying to skip all those.
Probably comments, uh, Mrs. Loon, do we have any com- do we have comments on topics not related to the agenda? We didn't, okay, thank you, well, and we do not have strategic discussion this evening, um, because we anticipated that we would have lots of discussion this evening.
Budget, yep, it was enough.
Yeah, it was great. So moving on to superintendent's update.
Yeah, just a couple, yeah, just a couple of little things. Facility master plan is continuing to be, uh, developed, and demographic study is going on by the team, uh, that we've hired to do that work. Uh, they are also continuing community meetings, I know they had another one last week, and if there's any others that are out there, I think we're through the scheduled ones, but if there are other groups, please let us know, we'll, uh, love to schedule those. There'll be meetings with admin in June and July to summarize data, review data, uh, and then begin to, uh, put the plan of bringing you some presentations, probably July and August, uh, to get you some summary data of what they've learned at this point, so it's proceeding nicely. Second thing, Go CSD, that's a group that we're a member of, uh, just for your awareness, Innovation Summit was last week, over seven hundred educators from the region came together for two days of learning, uh, with some keynote speakers as well, as a lot of breakout sessions. Uh, so educators, learning from educators in the summer, giving of their time, uh, to grow as professionals, was a wonderful two days. Uh, I think twenty-six districts represented, uh, that represent over eighty thousand students in southwest Missouri, coming together to learn together. Uh, third thing, Explore, Carol obviously hit a lot of that in the budget, but over ten thousand students attending on a daily basis right now. We've got eight thousand signed up for July, uh, so we, or for the July, uh, We've got eight thousand signed up for July, so we, or for the July, for the next half, it starts before July, actually. The first, first section will be, or first half will be ending soon, because it rolls fast, and then the second will be continuing for the next four or five weeks. Another exciting part, new, new teacher induction program, we mentioned in our new hiring process, able to activate that much earlier in the process. We already had first day of teacher induction for thirty-seven educators, and we have thirty-five more next week, so Kathy Gross's team, as well as the innovation team, as well as technology, and Jay's team, everybody coming together to make this happen so much earlier for the team, team members that are coming on, so another thirty-five will be welcome to the system next week, so that they'll have the opportunities to learn this summer and be, begin forming relationships with our leaders and our fellow teachers. So exciting things to see our progress on the new hiring process and new induction starting again next week. Other thing, I'll just go straight to legislative, if that's okay. Obviously, we've wrapped up session, and we're in this kind of holding pattern, which is typical for this month or so, as we wait for the governor to decide what he'll sign, what he'll veto, and then the response of the legislature of whether there will not, there'll be a veto session. So a lot of holding pattern, there's some things we assume, MSBA's already beginning to work on policy recommendations of the things that we assume will be going into place, but not much motion quite yet, so we'll inform you if anything changes. That's it, legislative and me.
Great, thank you. And yes, I've heard some feedback from the first new teacher induction, which to me is amazing, to think that back in the day, I had my new teacher induction the day before I was, had a hundred and eighty students coming to, to face, high school students. So they, they receive their, their laptops, as I understand, and so they're on canvas, doing things, planning.
Training all summer, so opportunities to learn.
Okay, good, move, move on to board comments. One thing I might mention is that we, several of us attended the MSBA Summer Leadership Institute. I attended Jerry, Alina, and Charles, and that was last weekend. And I would like to congratulate, our two new board members have finished their required board membership professional learning. Again, professional learning applies to the board, and then Jerry and I continued our professional learning by attending sessions on Saturday. And I thought I'd give Alina and Charles just a minute to share any highlights from your learning and your training or your learning, and Jerry and I, I don't know, we really have anything to share.
You covered it all, don't say anything. It'll be done.
I found it both affirming, overwhelmingly affirming, and kind of challenging. I mean, beyond sorting out, you know, the nuances between every student succeeds act versus no child, I mean, there was that, I mean, there was the content there, but it was affirming in that we do a lot of things right, and there aren't many districts in, in the state who wouldn't trade their problems for ours in a heartbeat, and I think that's always good to know when you interact with your professional colleagues. And challenging in, in sort of recognizing that as the largest district, district accredited, fully accredited district in the state, it matters what we do, and, and that, that's a very good thing, it seems to, to whom much is given, much is expected in return. And I think that the, the clear message that I took away was it's really important, it's as complex a beast as we are, is that the beast always has to be targeted on demonstrable learning outcomes. Whatever we're doing, at some point, that's where the rubber hits the road, and that's hard for a place as big and complicated as we are. That said, most other districts would like to be as complicated as we are, and having talked to some particularly new board members from, from other districts who live in the weeds, I do not want to live there. Not because it's trivial, but because I think it's just entirely too complex for us to be at that sort of ground level every day. And I think it's, I think it's also obnoxious for a board to tell professional educators what they ought to do at that level.
I see T-shirts in our future. I don't want to live in the weeds. I'll just be quick, since I know what time it is. First of all, I was pretty impressed with MSBA in general, I mean, we attended the final certification for our board training, but then also the conference, so I, I just found MS, MSBA to be highly organized and pretty clear, and I appreciated the learning that was there, of course, it's all new learning for me, so I, I love new learning. I walked away recognizing how healthy our board is. We have a very healthy board, and so I think that speaks to our community, because we do represent our community. I think we have an amazing talent in our superintendent, we heard tons of stories from different board members, and so how critical it is to have the right person in that seat for the health of our district. It, I, it was great to learn a lot of new language, just, what's MCIP and ADA and all this type of stuff. Yeah, I mean, CSIP, I mean, I felt like I was back, I felt like I, I mean, but it was really good, because I felt like I was back in school making flashcards, you know, like, what does this mean? But even tonight, I'll tell you, through some of the presentations, I'm like, I know what that means, I know what that means. You know, it's like elf, I know him, I know what that word is, so. So just for the onboarding process, I thought it was great that we went through this early on in our onboarding process. The other thing is, is there were so many other districts that have no informal orientation for new board members. So I just want to thank our current board, our administrators, for already having meetings with us to onboard us quickly. So that's a best practice that stands out for our district, as well as pretty much there, it was, I don't know what the word is, but I'll just echo what Charles said, is that the districts are looking to us for leadership, so I think what the decisions we do make set the tone for the district, and certainly summer school is one of those, that people are listening, and so it just, you know. And I also echo that the measurement of, of student learning is, is critical, and I know that's a complex configuration, but I know if we are gonna be at the ten, fifteen, thirty thousand foot level, we do want to see what those metrics are, and I know those are constantly being developed. But I'm excited to, to help make sense of those, so thank you. Thanks for sending us.
Jerry, I don't want to leave you out, is there anything anyone mentioned about?
Jerry does a great job of representing us at MSBA. He was on the delegate stage and, and sitting up on the stage.
I kept trying to get his attention, he wouldn't look at us, because.
There's no picture of me on the website, but.
Well, I have one, so I'll be sending it to you.
I hope I wasn't, I hope I wasn't side talking.
No, you looked like you were really absorbing it all.
When Jerry came into the room during the last part of training, it was very much like cheers the norm.
But you, you do put a lot of, a lot of time in that, Jerry, so I mean that sincerely. It really is, yeah.
Okay. Good for Jerry.
Go somewhere else.
Upcoming meetings, how's that? We have regular meeting will be held June twenty-eighth, so we have a bit of a, a bit of time, we usually just have two weeks in between meetings. We have three weeks, we have a lot of stuff to think about and read and reflect on, and, and part of that setting the, the regular meeting, June twenty-eighth, has to do with budget, our, our, we need to get this budget ready to go, approved, right, Carol? Yeah, okay. Okay, so moving on, are, are, there are other meetings that, or other comments, I'm sorry, that I didn't ask.
Really briefly, I had the opportunity to wander over to Billy today, since it's in the neighborhood for Explore, and I have to say, I was really impressed. I mean, I think the principal there is probably someone who's sort of getting his feet wet, did a terrific job, it was, it was disciplined and focused, but also lively, and so I took as the measure, I was there for about an hour, and I was exhausted when I left.
Every day. Couldn't do it anymore, okay. Anyone else have any last board comments, or am I missing some upcoming meetings between now and June twenty-eighth?
Just note that our final meeting is on the nineteenth.
Of July. Okay, and take a minute and do plus deltas, we've had a long meeting and a lot of discussions, so if there's something that worked well tonight, you appreciated, or something that you thought we can improve, please leave those for us, we look at those each week as when we have board officers' meetings, so, okay, at this time, moving on to executive session, the board will conduct, will conduct an executive session following this meeting to discuss real estate, personnel, and collective bargaining issues as provided in section six one eleven dot oh two, one, two, three, nine, and thirteen RSMO. So at this time, I need a motion for the board to move into executive session, Alina Leonard has a motion, second by Charles, and we will vote at this time. Thank you, the vote is complete, at this time, we will go into exec session, and we will adjourn this meeting.